Our Wednesday, October 2nd Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian, Landegrin, Lee, Manukian, and Chairperson Yassai.
Here.
I'm here, too.
Mr. Astorian stepped out for just a second. He's going to be back in a little bit. Can we have a report regarding posting of agenda, please?
Agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 25th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Can everyone please stand and repeat after me the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
I do not have any cards. We have a big audience today, and if anyone would like to speak on an item, please fill up a card that's at the table over here and then just submit it to us so you'll be able to speak. And I skipped one item. So let's go to approval of the minutes. We have comments on the minutes. Can we get a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Second. Okay, great. You don't need roll call on it. So let's move oral communication. We're done. Zoning appeals, no item. Number seven, Planning Commission items, new business, item A, street alley vacation. This is case number 173V. And we have a staff member here to report on it. Can you introduce yourself, too?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair Yassai and Planning Commissioners. My name is Mike Forney. I'm with the Community Development Department. My title is Senior Housing Product Manager. I typically work on affordable housing projects, so this is kind of my new venture into something a little different. The item before you is the alley vacation case number 173V, and it is the vacation of Alley 246. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Alley 246 running north-south between Doran Street and Pioneer Drive and the eastern 150
feet of Alley 247, running east-west between Alley 246 and Columbus. So the site map up on the screen shows the alleys. Again, Alley 246 that runs north-south that you can see in blue, as well as the easterly 150 feet of Alley 246. There's also a new alley that's proposed, and you can see that highlighted in orange. It looks kind of yellow. And that's just west of Alley 246, and that would connect the Alley 247 to Pioneer Drive. And this is an aerial showing the same thing, both the two alleys that will be vacated as well as the new alley that is proposed. Oh, I didn't know you could do that. And then I don't want to talk too much about the project, because that's not the item before you, but the trigger for all of this is a new proposed 507-unit apartment building, or actually apartment project. It's two sites, and you can see them up there, Site A and Site B. The Site A is what affects these alleys. And to talk a little bit about it, because this is coming to you in two weeks, the Stage Two design is coming to you in two weeks, but just to kind of introduce it. Again, it's a 507-unit project. Site A is five stories, 315 units with 456 parking spaces. And Site B on the other side of Central is also five stories, 192 units, and 275 parking spaces. And I think my last slide will probably show it a little bit better, but the project also provides a public pasail on the very western edge, the southwest corner of the project, and it will basically serve to expand the Doran Gardens mini park that was just newly constructed up there.
Very nice.
And this shows the site map of the Site A, the 315 units. And you can see on the southwest corner where it's identified as park. Oh, sorry, didn't know I had this ability. This will essentially expand the Doran Gardens mini park that was just recently finished. Thought we had another area. So to talk about the alleys a little bit more, back. Yeah, we did. So Alley 247 is, I apologize, Alley 246 is approximately 400 feet in length and 17 to 18 feet in width. Alley 247, at least the portion subject to the action, is 150 feet in length and 20 feet in width. I want to show you some photographs now. Oh, we're missing slides. I don't know what happened, but we had slides showing the actual alleys. I apologize that it's not there. But I did want to point out one thing. Where the two alleys intersect, it's, in my opinion at least, a very, it's a dangerous intersection now. You have a parking garage that's literally on that corner. So if you're going eastbound on Alley 246, and you either turn onto 247, or you, I apologize, eastbound on 247, and you want to turn right or left on 246, or if you want to continue through that parking lot to the traffic light, you have to stick your car out a good eight feet just to see if there's traffic coming from the right-hand side. So this would, you know, the vacation of these two alleys would, of course, help the project move forward, but it would also eliminate that dangerous intersection. So in conclusion, and I apologize again for not having the actual photographs, there are some attached to the staff report. And stated in the last paragraph of the staff report, "Staff has determined the alley vacations are consistent with the goals and objectives of the circulation element of the comprehensive general plan." And with that, it really concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, though, I will do my best to answer those.
Great, thank you. I see a number of new faces that have walked in. If you guys want to speak on any item, please fill out a card at the table next over here and then submit it to us so you can speak on an item. We have any questions?
Mr. Forney, thank you very much. So when a vacation occurs, the city processes the vacation, but does the owner who is going to benefit from it pay for it?
No, the owner doesn't pay for it. The city does not own the underlying title fee to the property. We only own the easement. Oh, I didn't know you were here. Sorry.
Chairman Yassai and Commissioner Landegrin, if the question is whether the developer, the property owner pays for the application fee, yes, they do. But as Mr. Forney started to explain, the underlying fee is owned by the owners adjacent to the alley, so the property reverts back to them when we give up the easement.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? We have three speaker cards for this item. First one, Alice Sinanian. Hello?
Alice Sinanian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sinanian.
Yes, hi.
Excuse me.
It's okay. I just want to make a statement about this project. Even though I'm all for progress and building new things, but it seems to me that there is a, I'm seeing that we're going to be oversaturated with apartments on Central and adjacent streets. It's already very difficult to drive on Central during any hours, not even peak hours, and especially the areas where it's close to the freeway entry or exit. So I think this project is too big for the area, and I'm a resident on Pioneer, and most of the time I use the alley because it's very difficult to drive on Central. So I understand you're not going to eliminate alley altogether. There's going to be something. Is that what, that's what you said? But still, I think it's not a good idea to have a building of that size, an apartment building, that's going to add so many cars to that small area, especially when there is another apartment building that's being built, and I think it's called Nexus, if I'm not mistaken. It's very close.
Lexington, Orange.
Right. And another one, that the city council is going to be listening, the proposal next week, 300, 400 unit on Lexington and Central. It's just way too much. Let's just not overbuild Glendale, especially downtown Glendale. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, we have Alex Atkinson.
Alexenian.
Alexenian, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm also a resident of Pioneer Drive over at Park Towers at 343 Pioneer, and I'm totally against this project, but I'm sure this is not about the project right now. We're going to talk about only the dedication of the alley, whatever. I did look at the documentation at the city regarding this project, especially the traffic study, which was a complete joke. I've seen a lot of traffic studies, and they're almost all the same. They all say the same thing, no significant impact to the area. This one is complete bull. That intersection right there, Central and Pioneer, is an impossible intersection as it is today. Adding 500 some odd units here, plus another 200 units across the street to Nexus, altogether 750 units, that one intersection, some like 3,000 people, 1,500 cars, is going to have no significant impact. Who writes these things and why? Just to get paid, is that it? Now, this gentleman here says that's a dangerous intersection over there at the alley. I've been traveling alley for years. I've never seen any problems there. That's not a justification, of course, but it is not a dangerous intersection. I spoke to Mr. Kraus on this thing as soon as the environmental impact report came out, and I told him my concerns, and I also sent him a letter back on September 14th. The alley was one of the issues I covered in the letter, along with the number of units that's going to be going there, the amount of traffic, the amount of noise, the amount of pollution that we're going to experience. Why does somebody else take up the issue of apartments in Glendale? Why do we have to always get it at Central? Up and down the street, everybody's building units. Nobody cares about what's happening to people there. There's some residents over there that's going to be after moving. There's office buildings over there, there's commercial buildings. My doctor's over there, what's he seen today? My finger. He's over there, he's going to have to move. Everybody moves, why? Developer makes money. On top of that, he wants the thing dedicated. Instead of dedicating, he should be enlarging the street so we can use it, because we will never be able to use Central and Pioneer anymore. So everybody's after a buck. I understand that. But this intersection is a disaster. It's not working now, because, you know, traffic that come off the 134 freeway is already congested there, so there'll never be an arrow over there for us to turn to Pioneer, and that makes no sense, because traffic's going to be even worse. And now we're going to put more units there. The traffic going eastbound on the street on Sanchez is already backed up all the way to Central. More units? Where's all these people going to go? Where? There's only so much space in that one intersection. But they don't care, they just want to add some units. They give you some pretty pictures and draw some nice plans, and they're going to stick a five-story building right there, huge bulky building right in the middle of the area that we right now traverse through all the time. I mean, that alley is our salvation. We use that alley every day. Everybody in that building that I know of, and everybody in that street, use that alley to go up and down Pioneer and Durant, because there's no other way. All right? And that alley is not dangerous, nothing like that. If anything, they should really make it wider and go straight ahead and let us use it. Now, as far as this other question, I don't know if this issue was raised and brought on the calendar after I complained about it, or was it planned before? But why is this coming up now? This is a make or break thing for the project, I imagine, because it's right in the middle of it. Why wasn't this issue discussed way in the beginning when they submitted their plans and said, "We want the alley dedicated," or "We can't build our project"? Maybe more people complained about it back then. All of a sudden, we get this thing in the mail, and a week later, there's a meeting? People have other things to do to come here and complain. I'm sure there's a lot of people in my building that want to come over here and complain, but they short notice, and they couldn't be here. This doesn't seem fair. Doesn't seem democratic. Seems like we're just ramrodding another project down our throats, and you probably don't have much to do about anything here. That's what I got to say about this project. 750 units, one intersection, 3,000 people, think about it.
Okay, next person is Nita Farid.
She's not here yet. She's all away.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if, I request that you ask the audience to address the alley vacation, which is the item in front of you, and not the proposed project and the number of units. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next one is Rodney Khan, and you represent the applicant.
Yes, I do. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and City Staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. I was going to echo what the director just said. We're here this evening for an alley vacation. Nothing more, nothing less. We heard from the city engineer that it makes sense to vacate this alley. It's actually a substandard alley. The new alley will be exceeding what is required by alleys. The existing alley is about 17 feet in width, and it does have a dangerous T-intersection. Whether that gentleman has experienced it or not, I have. This new alley will be between 20 to 25 feet. It'll intersect with the east-west alley and exit off into Pioneer. The southern part of that area will be, as pointed out, expansion of the Duran Gardens Park and also a pedestrian pasail. Very desirable expansion of park space and public open space in the downtown area, which is very much what we need. In terms of the people that are speaking from the Park Towers, Park Towers is a large, I think it's 18-story, two complexes, very significant project that you see right next to the freeway. And the mention was related to traffic. And I'll speak to traffic only as it relates to this alley vacation, which is once again why we're here. The medical office use that's currently on the site generates between four to five times as much traffic as a residential apartment complex. As we move forward, we've conducted a traffic study with a professional traffic engineer that came to a conclusion that we acknowledge, the city acknowledges, is part of our environmental document. We're not here tonight to discuss that. We're here only to talk about the alley vacation. Finally, as it relates to why wasn't this be, this item made aware of at Stage One City Council? It was. It was. It was identified in the staff report. It talked very clearly about the alley needing to be vacated. It talked about how that was going to take place, and right now, we are going through that process that the city requires, which is why we're here this evening. Anyway, that concludes our remarks. Thank you very much. If you have questions, obviously, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. We have any questions, comments?
Oh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. So we are here tonight to address a legal question as to who owns, or who has the legal rights to that alley? No. Tell me exactly, if this commission votes yes, what will happen?
What staff is requesting is that you recommend to the city council that these alley vacations be approved. That's it.
And the city council approves it, then what?
Then the project moves forward. The alley vacations will move forward.
It's actually a little more limited than that. Actually, what we're here to ask you for is a finding of consistency with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive general plan of the city of Glendale. So we're here, it's a finding of consistency with the general plan. So it has really nothing to do with the rest of the project, it's just, is the vacation consistent with the general plan?
So you're saying that if, my problem is that I work in the Unum Building across the way, and I know how much use the locals put those alleys in, because right now, Central is non-functioning. Well, it's not functioning the way it ought to. It is not a thoroughfare. It is one long traffic jam. Okay? So when people want to get around from the northern part of the city to the southern part, they have to use alternative means. Okay? And that those alleys are part of that. So you're telling me that if I sit here and I'm thinking to myself, "Well, the city wants to provide its residents with transportation, ease of transportation," well, taking these alleys off the books does the opposite, doesn't it? It was an alternative that I no longer have. Isn't that true?
Well, with these alleys vacated, you would not be able to use an alley to go from Pioneer to Doran, but you would still be able to use, because of the new alley, you would be able to connect from the alley to Pioneer.
So what is there now would be replaced with something else?
That's right.
It's that red one. All right.
With the red one right there?
That's right.
Yeah.
And the red one, there was a statement right now that it'll be wider. When will the red alley go online?
The red alley would go online at the end of construction.
Chairman Yassai and Commissioner Manukian, to go back to your first question, how the process works, your recommendation will go to the city council. This is only a conditional vacation. So it only, the vacation of the alley will only happen if the project moves forward with the construction. So for whatever reason, if the project within the four-year entitlement, four year?
Five years.
Can happen, then the vacation of the alley will not take place, and the alley will remain as is.
All right.
To respond to your second question, the new alley will be dedicated to the city of Glendale for public use. It will be, on average, 24 feet wide, which is seven feet wider than the current existing alley that's proposed for vacation.
Okay. So the new alley will not, in fact, come into being unless the entire project is approved, moves forward, goes through the entire construction phases, its various construction phases, and then, once everything is done, they pull the covers off of it, we will have a 27-foot-wide alley in place of what we have now? That's what you're telling me?
Yes. With one clarification, it'll be a 24-foot-wide alley.
Not 27.
And it won't go all the way to Doran. It will connect Pioneer to the east-west alley.
Okay, yeah. So is there, the buildings over there, they have parking in the back, so they need access. They use that alley. It's their main way to get in and out.
Yes, Chairman Yassai, that's the reason that we have made the requirement to keep that access for the apartment buildings that have parking in the back. And in our experience and with our observation, most of the traffic that used the north-south alley connecting Doran to Pioneer were to take access to the medical building, where there is a surface parking lot. So with that gone, the necessity for that alley is minimized.
One last question, I promise. When is the earliest that locals will see?
Red.
The red gone?
Chairman Yassai. It depends on the development's schedule, but it will be within the four-years entitlement.
You mean when the red is available?
Well, for the red to be available, what is there now has to disappear.
Right.
What I'm asking is, when will what is there now disappear? And his answer is, it all depends on the developer's schedule.
Yeah, the schedule.
And that's within the next four years, and that's fine.
Okay, so you got your question answered.
Yeah, I answered.
I did want to just clarify, it's actually a five-year, not a four-year for this project.
It'll matter.
I do have a question. The traffic study was part of the EIR, correct?
Yes.
And there was no significant impact to traffic?
Chairman Yassai and Commissioner Landegrin, that was the outcome of the independent consultant's observation and determination, and city staff has reviewed it and agreed with it.
What is the numeric rating of Pioneer and Central?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information handy.
Would you posit it's an F? It's really horrible.
Pioneer and what?
Central.
The level of service, I think Commissioner is referring to. I have no idea. And we don't, on a regular basis, conduct those studies, so if we have any records of it, it will be old.
Are alleys even in circulation, in the circulation plan?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay.
But it was stated this one was not part of the circulation plan. Is that what you said, Mr. Forney?
That's right. These alleys are not shown on the circulation map.
Oh, circulation map. But it is used by traffic for circulation throughout the city.
But when, I'm sorry.
Uh huh.
When you say it's being used by traffic for circulation, that traffic is the, actually the medical, the underlying fee is the one that this alley was intended for. Am I correct?
Commissioner Astorian, technically, yes.
Thank you.
So the circulation that we have observed has primarily been to access the medical building adjacent to the alley. And the underlying fee is owned by the owner of the medical building and those lots.
Can you also explain that so everyone understands? The city doesn't actually own that alley, the north and south alley, right?
Commissioner Yassai, correct. The city, 98% of the streets and alleys within the city are owned by the adjacent property owners who have the underlying fee to those alleys. The city is granted easement for public use and purpose. So once those easement are not warranted or not needed anymore, the properties automatically, through the vacation process, are reverted back to the adjacent property owners.
Okay. Mr. Chair, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. What happens, I know that we're here to look at the consistency with the downtown specific What happens if this easement is not recommended to the city council? How does it impact the project?
I'll have to refer that to our community development staff.
We forward your recommendation to the city council, and when they consider the item, they consider your recommendation as part of their approval process. So in other words, if you were to recommend approval or denial, the same recommendation would be considered in the same way by council. So they are an independent decision-making body, but they do consider your comments.
Right, I understand. I guess from the developer's standpoint, you know, if this easement is not approved here nor at the city council, how does that affect your project?
Commissioner Lee, in terms of impact on our project, the project would not be able to move forward, because that would actually create a physical barrier that separates our buildings and the way that they've been designed. One of the reasons that it's so beneficial for us is not just, as was mentioned, in terms of the circulation being improved, but also for the open space, for the expansion of the park. That wouldn't take place at all if this alley were not moved.
Can you explain that a little bit? Is the expansion of the park below the east-west alley and between the east-west alley and Doran Street, where those buildings are at?
Mr. Forney, could you show us with your little pointer?
Can you go back? Can you go to the site plan?
That one right there shows it pretty well. You can see the green border.
Can you point it with your mouse?
Yeah. So this area here is the expansion of the park. It's proposed to be a public passeo, and it goes up all the way here. And there's also a small strip on the west side of that new proposed alley.
That's what connects to the...
Yeah. So it's a pedestrian passeo on the south end of the...
Essentially, the alley now becomes a pedestrian passeo, connecting the north-south.
Actually, a significant amount, more than just the alley, becomes a pedestrian passeo and the expansion of the park. It's several thousand square feet. But once again, that only takes place if this alley is vacated and we're able to move it.
Go ahead. Okay. Mr. Foy?
Yeah, if the Commission would like, I went and got the copy of the EIR for this project, and I can answer some questions about the trip generation.
A card was filled out.
Are you Ms...
Farid.
Are you Ms. Farid?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. You can...
I'm sorry, Mr. Foy.
Mr. Foy, did you want to finish what you were saying?
Yes. Just because the existing uses on-site, especially the medical office, generates so many trips that actually the replacement project will generate a few more trips in the AM peak hour, but fewer trips in the PM peak hour. It will actually be a traffic decrease in the PM peak hour.
Okay. All right. You had a card.
I did.
And then you have, how many minutes?
Five.
Five minutes?
All right. Hello, and I'm sorry for being late. I apologize. I just want to share an interesting statistic. I'm opposed to opening the alley up and allowing it to be used. And the reason is predominantly safety and access, as well as, of course, what it does to traffic. I went today, just a random sampling, and observed the following. And this is from 1:50 until 3 o'clock today. I stood in that parking lot, and I counted the number of cars that use the alleys, both alleys. So that would be your number 246 and 247. And 17 cars entered from Pioneer before Central. From the Doran side, Doran proper, nine cars entered the alley. There's an entrance to the alley, people going directly to the alley, having nothing to do with that parking lot or the building associated with it. Before the Doran light on Central going north, 31 cars entered that way and proceeded to go into the alley, going god knows where. We had eight cars that left their parking spaces, pulled out of parking spaces, again, I have no idea what they were parked there for, but left their parking spaces and rather than access the street onto Central or onto Pioneer, chose to again use the alley. And 11 cars chose to back into the alley 247 and go out toward Columbus that way. My concern is with a public school, and this is again the basically 2 to 3 o'clock window. If that alleyway is closed and the people are just using it to get from A to B and have nothing to do with that property there, all of those cars are then going to have to go onto Columbus. And that's going to be where our children are walking, and we've just had another stop sign put in there last year for the safety of the kids. What's going to happen when all those cars don't have the alley and then proceed onto Columbus or take Columbus to access whatever they need to get onto Central? So that's my concern. And again, this is just a one-hour sampling by a layman who just decided in preparation for today, the best thing to do is to see how people are driving. I would love to see the city take a look at who's coming in and who's going out and where they're going. And I think that would be truly helpful in figuring out how to make a decision, because we can look and see, well, who's using it for medical offices. But at the end of the day, whatever they're using it for, if they're cutting through that alley, it's to solve a problem that exists somewhere else. Thank you.
Commissioner, members of the planning commission, I just want to point out that we don't discuss the EIR too much, because the public comment period has ended and it closed September 26th. It was published and made available for a 45-day public review from August 12, 2013, to September 26th.
Okay. Great. Mr. Khan, I will allow a rebuttal, since you're the applicant.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be very, very quick. First of all, the alley is not being closed. We keep saying the alley is being closed. It's not being closed. The alley, a new alley is being created. One is being eliminated, one is being created. The one that's being created actually exceeds the width that the current one is, the substandard alley is. So a new, exceeding standard alley is being created. The other thing in terms of trip generations, we didn't do a random sample and went out there for an hour to see what would happen. We had traffic engineers, professional engineers, go out there and do counts. And thus, they came up with their trip generation and their study. So it was a very technical data that they did. And then finally, as it relates to the circulation, right now, Central Avenue is being widened. Central Avenue is being improved. That's going to end in a matter of weeks. That has had a significant impact in terms of traffic, not just in this area, but up and down Central Avenue. And that's something that needs to be considered. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other questions before we close the public comment?
No.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close the public comment period. Comments by commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since we're here to make recommendation according to the goals and objectives of the comprehensive general plan of the City of Glendale for downtown specific plan, whether or not it's consistent with our plan, I think people will have an opportunity to discuss this project further down the road, to raise all these concerns and issues. So we're here just to really, to deal with this. So I am leaning towards going with the recommendation of the staff is making to approve the vacation of this alley.
Do you like to say?
I just have one more question. Sir, 14?
You have a question for staff?
Staff.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment.
That's not public comment.
Well, you still have...
We close it off.
Yeah, we close the public.
Go ahead.
Okay. Looking at your drawing?
Yes.
You have it? Okay. So if someone is driving, I guess, eastbound on, this is after the proposed alley has been put in place and alley 246 has been vacated and demolished and taken out. So I'm driving eastbound on Pioneer Drive, and I turn right onto the proposed alley. Where will that alley take me to? Basically, I'm making a big U-turn.
Yeah. From Pioneer Drive, if you take the new alley, your only choice is to go west on alley 247.
Which turn?
It's on. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Comments? No?
No.
Okay. I want to thank everyone who did come and speak. I think the participation is really important in a lot of these cases that come before us. We don't get much participation at all from residents. And I know it's been frustrating with a lot of the improvements that have been going around the city lately, especially in the downtown area. We have, the city has, over the last 20 years, created a plan for the downtown area where it has made a choice to say, we're moving forward in these directions. And that's what we're trying to find consistency with, as one of our staff members said. I think if neighbors have concerns for those things, they should speak up. And the planning process is fluid, always, and it should represent the people who live there. And if there's enough interest, those things can change. So we're here right now, we're not making a decision on the project itself, but we're making a decision on the alley. The project dictates what the alley is. And if you have problems with the project, there's times for that and appropriate times for that. And I encourage you to go and speak about it. So because the project is designed and it has been given preliminary City Council approval, we are going to vote on that to support what the City Council has done. And I know this alley itself is a little different. It's more unique than other alleys, because it has that north-south connection. But what you do get, I think, which is important, is a pedestrian, a dedicated pedestrian plaza that's connected to a public space. And that's something I think we lack as a city, and I think the neighbors would benefit from that. So with that, I would entertain a motion for it, so we can move forward.
You can consider my comments as a motion. So...
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners, Astorian?
Yes.
Landrigan?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Manoukian?
Yes.
And Chairperson Yossai.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is Item B, subdivision of land tentative track number 72117. We have a case, a staff report on that.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, because City Council last night was considering an appeal on this matter, and because they continued the consideration of that for two weeks, we recommend that Planning Commission also continue consideration of this track map for two weeks to a date certain on October 16th. It would be, procedurally, really, you should not take action before City Council has a chance to opine on the design review case. So we recommend that you postpone this for two weeks.
Okay.
I move. I second.
We have two motions. Who wants to move it?
To a date certain, October 16th.
Okay. We have a second? Okay, roll call.
Planning Commissioners, Astorian?
Yes.
Landrigan?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Manoukian?
Aye.
And Chairperson Yossai.
Aye. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, that's without further notice, correct?
Without further notice, yeah. Okay, next item C, use variance, case number PVAR 1319044. This is for location 115-119 East Palmer Avenue. We have a staff report on that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, this proposal is required because there was a use variance granted in 1977 for a very specific land use, restaurant wholesaling. The current property owner would like to use the property for just any sort of wholesaling or any sort of warehousing, but under our code, because use variances are specific to whatever they were originally granted as, they have to get a new use variance. Staff supports the proposal. We don't think that there's any change in proposed impacts, any change in the effects on the neighborhood, whether it's restaurant wholesaling or restaurant warehousing or some other sort of particular kind of warehousing occurring, it's all going to be the same. The building is still in good repair. It's still, by all accounts, a good neighbor to the area. There have been no objections from neighbors. There have been no comments or objections from the other city departments. And we think that with the appropriate, with the attached conditions of approval, this can remain viable and a good neighbor land use in that location for years to come. That would conclude my staff report.
I have a question for Mr. Hamilton. And it's because I don't know what this was before and what it is now. Is it that our code, at a point in time, put differences between the different types of wholesaling and different requirements? For example, a restaurant supply wholesale versus a general wholesale?
No. Wholesaling and warehousing, to my knowledge, have always been treated as broad categories. I think this was simply a case that when the original application was made back in '76 or '77, they wrote it down as restaurant wholesaling, and they never gave consideration to what the impact would be 40 years from then, when that particular business left. And then they're left holding the bag that they have to get that exact same type of business in there. I don't think it was anything more than an oversight to the potential implications down the road.
So there is no changes to parking requirements and...
No.
FAR?
No change to parking requirements. There's no new construction proposed, no new signs are proposed at this time. We don't think there's going to be any different traffic generation.
Mr. Lee?
What is the life of this use variance?
It's unlimited.
Unlimited.
Until such time as it's abandoned for at least a year. So if the business, whatever business goes in there now, continues to operate for 10, 20, 30 years, but then if they close for up to a year, then the use variance terminates at that point.
Mr. Chair, it's either that or 40 years from now, somebody else will come out and say that this is outdated and we got to change it, so it's either one.
Okay. Other comments? Questions? We do have a card. I believe it's a consultant for the project, Janay Williams. Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Janelle Williams, Williams Land Use Services. My office is at 2418 Honolulu Avenue in Montrose. I'm here representing the Lewis family. And they are here. The family is a fourth generation here in Glendale since 1917. Longtime residents here in Glendale. Donald and Barbara Lewis developed this property back in 1977. They were the original developer. And today, we have the owners, Barbara and Donald Lewis, here, along with their son, Donald Bud Lewis Jr., and their daughter, Marla Lewis-Fogg. This property is intended to transfer and remain with the family through generations to come. The Lewis's have always been good neighbors. They've kept their property in good shape, well-maintained, throughout the years. Neighboring residents have been allowed to utilize the excess parking that they've had on-site historically. They've cooperated with the police during various surveillance operations that they've conducted in the neighborhood. They voluntarily have illuminated the walkway on their property that acts as a pass-through to the alley and to the post office, and that's for use of the neighbors in the neighborhood. They've immediately and always tended to any graffiti or trash in the alley behind their building. And the use is very quiet in comparison to their surroundings, which are a post office and automotive to the north, multifamily and automotive to the south, multifamily to the east, and auto dealers and retail to the west. As stated in the staff report, general warehouse and wholesaling are certainly compatible with the prior approved use as a restaurant supply wholesale warehouse. And we'll go directly into the findings then. Finding number one, the building permitted by prior variances would have no practicable use without a variance modification at this time, as it's not suited for any residential use, having been constructed as a warehouse. The code intends reasonable uses to be provided for permitted structures. The use as a wholesaling warehouse will allow the property to remain viable while not appreciably changing the low-impact effect on the surrounding businesses and residential neighborhood. Approved in 1977, built in 1978 by the Lewis's, it's a 9,224-square-foot, one-story building on two lots totaling 18,914 square feet. It was designed specifically for warehousing operations. The building is not suitable for residential use with its underlying R-2250 zoning designation, nor is it suitable for any retail commercial purpose. The use as a wholesale warehouse will still be cleaner and have less impact than either the abutting automobile zone or the multifamily residential zone in which the property is located. The property, having adequate parking in the front and in the rear, with a loading bay for trucks in the rear off of the alley, was constructed for such use and purpose as a warehouse and is only suitable for the use and purpose proposed to continue. It was built to accommodate warehousing operations and functions well as it is designed. The building and appurtenant structures are in very good condition, viable, still relevant, very well-maintained. The property is unique, and it continues to be surrounded by heavy commercial uses and heavy residential as well. All of its parking and loading needs are accommodated on-site. And it's proven over time to be a compatible, neighborhood-friendly land use. Modifying the variance would assure a continued low-impact to the neighbors, both residential and the brand auto dealers. There have been no history of any violations at the location. Property is attractively landscaped with a lawn similar to the residential and a hedge. An attractive landscaped evergreen buffer on the easterly property line. The property not only fits in, but is superior to the impacts associated with the alternative of having another multiple-family residential project in constrained South Glendale, or encroaching land uses associated with automobile sales and service into the residential street, or abutting a residential project up against auto sales and servicing uses. The warehouse use is benign in comparison, especially when compared with the alternative uses, and generates far less traffic and parking congestion... uses, and generates far less traffic and parking congestion than any of the surrounding land uses. Parking provided on-site is more than adequate for warehousing. The surrounding residential streets are heavily burdened with scarce on-street parking for tenants, families, visitors, and is used as a route by the auto dealers for shuttling and portering of vehicles. The granting of the variance will not be contrary to the objectives of any ordinance. The code supports uses of land that promote stability, cause little impact on neighborhoods, and integrate well with surrounding land uses. This is the case with the subject property. The intent of the code is to establish compatible land uses within a defined area. The area of this particular use is a mix of heavy retail automotive, auto service and repair, dealer prep, car washing and portering of vehicles, large transport trucks circulating into the surrounding residential neighborhood, and the alley behind the subject property and Brand Boulevard, not to mention the post office traffic. Residential use of street parking is a concern if new residential development were to be placed at that location. Related to these uses is the constant vying for street parking, jostling of automobiles, both from the residential uses as well as the auto dealers. It's no secret in Glendale that the multifamily areas in South Glendale are oversaturated, the infrastructure is overburdened. By comparison, we operate during normal business hours with occasional weekend use. We don't utilize loudspeakers or bullhorns. We accommodate all of our vehicles on-site, including large truck deliveries, which are all received inside of the loading bay, which is inside of the property. This less intense land use occupying the site allows the property to operate in a manner compatible with the commercial and residential neighbors and consistent with the design of the building. The use is superior to any of the surrounding uses in terms of impact to the neighborhood and the underlying infrastructure. In April of 1977, use and standards variance was granted to erect this one-story building and establish a restaurant supply in an R4 zone. Variance was renewed in 82, and the use variance is the minimum necessary to afford the highest and the most efficient use of the property and the structure for its function as a clean wholesale warehouse. It's still relevant and consistent with the area and with the community. This request is to modify the specific and very limiting language of the prior variance, which I believe must have been an oversight because it's, the restaurant use, warehouse use is contained within the broad definition. So, it limited the building's business to only restaurant supply wholesale warehouse. We'd like to change it to general warehousing and wholesaling in order to offer some critically needed flexibility. In recent years, with the rise of large, big-box restaurant supply superstores, such as Restaurant Depot, the small businesses that are specific to restaurant warehousing have been decimated. But the building itself, being developed for use only as a warehouse, would continue to be as benign, would still be the perfect transitional buffer between the neighboring multifamily residential to the east of the site and the very busy and intensive uses of the Brand Boulevard of Cars to the west of the site. Structure was built by the Lewis's to be a warehousing type of building, and it will remain so. There's a loading dock to the rear adjacent to the alley, and parking is provided both at the rear of the building and in the lot off of Palmer. The building has undergone very few changes in its 36-year history, all changes being to the interior or maintenance upgrades. The site is well-maintained, landscaped, and clean. It's kept free of weeds and trash at all times. There have never been any calls for police service at the site, and for these reasons, we ask your approval of this variance request, and we ask that it run with the land and not be subject to renewal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have, any comments, questions, move motion?
I have a question. Just curious, the property owner is asking for the use modification. Is there tenant that is already spoken for to occupy this space?
Yes, yes, there is.
For this uses?
The uses, the uses in the building now, and this was an oversight, when they were asked to obtain a zoning use certificate by the property owner, that was then when staff recognized that this limitation. So, what it is, is a studio lighting and a warehouse for a sump pump distribution company.
Great.
Okay. Also furniture warehouse for a business on Brand Boulevard.
Thank you. Motion? Or would you like any comments?
Do you have any comments?
No.
If there are no comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Oh, what are you fishing?
Do you know what her motion, his motion?
I'm reading his mind.
I was ready to say, yeah, she had me at hello, so.
Go ahead.
So, it's been seconded, I don't need to reiterate my motion.
Say, say, say what your motion is.
Yeah, you have to read this through.
Yeah.
Not all of it.
I think it was an impulsive second.
Upon review, upon review and consideration of all material exhibits of current record relative to use variance, case number PVAR 1319044, located at 115119 East Palmer, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, I make the motion that the planning commission hereby approve said use variance, case number 1319044.
I second.
Great, can we have a roll call?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Yussai.
Aye, thank you. Next item, D, use variance, case number PVAR 1301745. This is on location 671 West Broadway. Staff report, please.
Chairman Yussai and members of the commission, this morning, we received a letter from the applicant who's requesting a withdrawal of this application. So, this application is now formally withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay, completely.
So, he's closing the pool hall?
Yes, would appear so.
Darn it.
All right, next item, E, Glendale Municipal Code Amendments and Downtown Specific Plan Amendments. This is applied for citywide, and applicant is the City of Glendale, Municipal Development Department. Staff report.
Mr. Foie, before you go to your report, may I make a suggestion to this body?
Sure.
May we have a show of hands for folks that are here for this, or may perhaps there is something else that they want to talk about? And do we have anything else other than this on the agenda?
This is it.
This is the last one.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to talk about this case that we just announced, please fill out a card, which is located on the table over here. Okay, so I have, I have only three cards, so.
And I, and I was going to request a five-minute recess because seriously, I have not had any chance to read any of these communications that have been kind of forwarded in our way.
Okay. We'll have a five-minute recess, and I just want to remind, the commissioners cannot discuss the case before us and during the recess. All right, we'll go ahead for a five-minute recess right now.[1114.41]
It's Rhonda.
Yeah, any man who wears that tie.
Okay, we're back in session.
Nothing, just go back there.
Okay, we're back from our recess. Thank you for everyone waiting. Mr. Foye, are you giving the staff presentation?
I'm giving, I will start it out, yes.
Okay, great, go ahead.
So the item before you tonight is a result of efforts to come up with some suggestions for streamlining the planning permit processes. We did a very thorough across-the-board look at many of our processes, which is why your packet is so thick, and I'm happy to present such a comprehensive look at what we have come up with here. So we did this in the direction of the city council. There was an outside consultant that reviewed, did a very preliminary review of our processes, and made a report to the city manager in January of this year. We took the idea to city council, and they directed us to form a task force and to come up with some suggested code changes, which is what you have before you, and of course your action tonight is to make a recommendation to the city council. And there will not be future review, I'm sorry, that's an old slide. There'll be future review by the city council if the commission desires. More time to look at it, of course, you could, but we're not planning on that right now. So let me talk a little bit about the task force. The task force members are listed on page two of your staff report, and we invited a total of 27 people. Obviously, not everyone showed up for every meeting. I believe we had a total of about six meetings over the course of the summer. And task forces by their nature are chosen to give us good advice and good input. They are not a representative sampling of every household in the city. They, it is not a referendum of any kind, and as a matter of fact, what we do is we try to balance the interests in a way, and we encourage people to try to come to consensus, or when they can come to consensus, to at least have a good discussion. Happily, I'm able to report that the task force was able to come to consensus on all of the topics before you. But you'll see here, of these 27 names, about six of them were representatives of homeowners' associations. We also had a number of people from the chamber, from the board of realtors, we had commercial brokers, we had some architects, we had some business owners here. So it was a really good cross-section of people. We felt it was a good cross-section of people, and I think the group got along pretty well and had some very fruitful and really very difficult discussions. And just on a personal level, I was very happy to see people being open-minded and willing to, you know, discuss some very difficult topics in a very rational and really positive So going forward, I will just start the topics as we discuss them. One had to do with registering businesses. The city has tried several methods of registering businesses. The first was in 1961, when we had use and occupancy certificates. Those are replaced in 2002 by our current permit, which is the zoning use certificate. These are one-term permits, they are regulatory. We check to make sure that the businesses are allowed in the zone and have all the proper permits to operate. We also use them to impart information to businesses. We don't add conditions, but we just remind them of certain salient parts of the code or other regulations that they need to remember to follow. Again, we track the use, we note a conditional use permit that they have to follow, we track the size of the businesses. What we are proposing is to replace a zoning use certificate with a business registration certificate. It would apply to all businesses except for home ocs. Right now, if you don't have a zoning use certificate, but you previously got a UNO, or if your business existed before UNOs were instituted, your grandfather didn't without any kind of review or registration at all. So this would end that, we would capture all the businesses in the city here. We would ask, in terms of implementation, for people to get their business registration certificate during the month when they originally got their ZUC or UNO, or for businesses that preceded even that, we would just phase them in over the year. This is not a tax. There will be a fee for it, but it will only cover our costs in administering this program. It is not a revenue generator for us. Honestly, I will be happy if we even break even, if this doesn't cost us more to administer than what we get, take in. There will be an annual renewal, and this is tied, the fee is tied to the ZUC fee. Your first time will be the same as what we currently charge for a zoning use certificate, and the annual renewal will be 20, is pegged at 25% of that cost. The reason we would like to have an annual renewal is that we know that in the real world over time, physical conditions tend to diverge from what the initial proposal is and what initial permits were for. And very often, what we find when people come in to get a zoning use certificate is that the previous occupant has made a whole bunch of changes which require building permits, sometimes very, things which are expensive to fix, and the past business which has created those circumstances is gone. And it's all on the new business to make corrections and come up with permits for, you know, new demising walls, new fire-rated corridors, perhaps new exiting requirements. So what this, what this will do is to ensure that as changes are made in the field, as they always are, we'll be able to catch them much more quickly and hopefully have the people who are responsible for them be the ones who get, secure the legal permission for them, and not stick it on some future tenant. The second topic had to do with conditional use permits. This is mostly for the public, I know the commission is well aware of this, but in our various zones, we've, with land uses, many of which are just permitted by right, some of them are prohibited, but others are conditionally prohibited, permitted, they need a conditional use permit. And it's a process that allows the city to consider the impacts of various activities. Generally, they control effects, impose time limits, other kinds of behavioral or operational characteristics. We also have a CUP for hillside construction of single-family homes, and I'll cover that So our current process for conditional use permits is that city departments review them, they impose conditions, we have a public hearing before a planning hearing officer with a notice mailed out, all residents, all owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site, and a three-foot-by-four-foot sign is posted on the site advising of the date of the hearing. Public testimony is given at the public hearing, or residents will often write emails, or make phone calls, or submit letters that are also considered by the hearing officer. And any decision can be appealed to the planning commission. So we took a look at the kinds of cases that we have for conditional use permits. What is it we've been hearing over the last number of years, and does it really, do these things really merit the level of view that we have for them? And as you can see in this chart, I hope, I'm not sure how wide it can be right on TV, hopefully it can be, the great majority of our cases are just for alcohol service in restaurants, sometimes in taverns, mostly in restaurants. You see, the fourth, well, the fifth column, I guess, is number of alcohol cases, in 2012 it was 27 out of the 31 CUPs. Then the number of speakers, we have three speakers for 2012, that's, other than the applicants. That doesn't mean three speakers per case, that means three speakers for all 27 cases. That is one-ninth of one person per case came to speak. So clearly, this is a category of uses which isn't generating that much controversy in the public's eye. So this, we thought, could be a good candidate for expedited review. So we are proposing a new permit called an administrative use permit to substitute for some of those land uses which require, now require a conditional use permit. Again, these are matters that are more routine and attract few speakers. I want to emphasize that there will still be noticing. We're still going to post a three-foot-by-four-foot sign on-site, we're still going to mail out a notice to all residents and occupants within 500 feet, and by the way, we also mail this notice automatically to every homeowners' association in the city. Anyone else who would like to receive all of those notices are free to sign up for that service. But instead of having a notice giving the date of a hearing, it'll be a notice that an application has been received and that a decision will be made. What it will probably say is something like, "On or after December 1st, 2012 or 2013, the community development director will consider such-and-such application service of beer and wine in Paradise Restaurant." And it'll give the description of the project, it'll give the case planner, the case planner's phone number, the case planner's email address, and anyone who is interested, as they can now, contact the case planner to review the plans, ask any questions by phone. What we will also do at this time that we mail out this notice is we will post on-site, post on the city's website, the plans. Instead of a staff report to a hearing officer, we're going to have a staff analysis that will be given to a senior or principal planner to make a decision on. That will also be posted during this 10-day review period, so people can get a fuller sense of what the issues are involved in the case, a very full description of all the operational characteristics, as well as any proposed conditions of approval or proposed recommendation of denial, or whatever the case may be. So other than the opportunity to have a place where you can come and speak in person, all of your opportunities to review and comment on this case will be exactly the same as We will still rattle this to other city departments for their comments, they will still choose The findings will be the same for conditional use permit, we're not lowering the standards of our decision-making. Neighbors can request to be notified of the decision once it's made, and an administrative use permit, should either the applicant or a neighbor be unhappy, could be appealed, again, as a conditional use permit, to the planning commission. So I'm going to be covering a lot of topics, I don't know if you'd like me to go straight through it, if you'd like to break for questions on individual topics.
Can we talk about the AUP?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you through with it? Is that why you're moving on?
Well, yeah, this is just another slide which...
When you're done with it, I'd like to talk about it.
Oh, I also want to mention that we'll be able to, what we call, kick up these two of public hearing, if there's reason to do so, if there's been a long and problematic history at a site, or if there's anything that is really unusual, or especially controversial or concerning about an application. We already have this concept in our code, as it applies to design review. There are certain thresholds of projects, square footage thresholds mostly, below which an applicant might get a design review exemption. But the code already says that if it is really an objectionable or controversial application, it could be kicked up to a hearing at the design review board. So this concept of kicking up is already well-established in our code. So we are going to apply it here as well. For, I mean, again, we've chosen categories of uses here which really have proven to not be very controversial, but we do want to have, you know, kind of a backup plan for those things which really do merit a wider public review, more form of public review.
And are you going to let us know what that criteria is? Or is that going to be...
Um, yes. You know what, Ms. Ast, I need her. It is here in the ordinance, let me try to find...
Ms. Ast, what is the criteria to move it from AUP? Kristen, did you hear the question?
If you wouldn't mind repeating it, I would appreciate that.
Can you give us the page where the criteria for moving an AUP to a CUP so it becomes a public hearing?
In, starting on page 57 of the ordinance is the new AUP chapter.
Oh, yes, it's on page 58 of your ordinance.
So is it considered an appeal then?
No, it's not. No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
It's just that instead of being decided on a purely administrative level, the notice will instead say, "We're going to have a hearing." It won't be any more expense for the applicant. It's under 3.49.020 authority, and it is basically the last sentence. "The hearing officer," that is, say, at a public hearing, "may review administrative use permits when the director believes an additional public input or public notice are desirable because of the location, operation, or other characteristics of the project."
There's nothing more concrete?
Well, you know, I mean, in the universe of circumstances that we see, and all the permutations and combinations thereof, it's really hard to, I'm personally reluctant to try to nail it down much tighter than that. I will tell you, in design review, the design review board's caseload, about 5% of their cases consist of things which have been bumped up from an exemption based on the analogous authority in the design review chapter. So it doesn't happen that often.
If there are recurring issues of being bumped up, I think they should be noted, and that should become the rule as opposed to...
Right.
You know, that needs to be part of the memory, and it needs to be made apparent to everyone.
Yes. Well, the slide here shows the uses, the principal uses for which we're proposing moving from a CUP to an administrative use permit. Again, this is alcohol sales. I want to remind you that taverns, nightclubs, and banquet halls have to get a CUP by themselves. So if we remove the CUP for alcohol service, they're still going to have a public hearing for the CUP.
Well, is there a mistake then on page 29? Because on 29, there's a notation number six, and it's in relationship to retail, trade uses, alcoholic beverage sales. Supermarkets only require an AUP for onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. That seems in direct contradiction to what you just said.
I'm sorry, say it again?
It's the top one on page 29.
That's in mixed-use zoning districts.
Supermarkets currently don't require a conditional use permit over 20,000 square feet to sell alcohol.
It says onsite consumption.
Right. If there's going to be like a tasting, which is kind of a newer thing for ABC and having tasting licenses, we're consistent, we require a CUP for tasting at places. This was, is consistent with just that aspect becoming an AUP. Consistent with alcoholic beverage sale, service, and consumption.
Should be more specific saying that than tasting, rather than say onsite consumption.
Yeah, I think it's a little broad.
Yeah.
If it's anything other than tasting, then it won't be...
It's not a supermarket.
It's not a supermarket. I mean, tasting is pretty strictly regulated.
It changes the zone.
Both by, by our own police department as well as by the ABC. I mean, it's the number of drinks, the number of tastes anyone can have in an hour, and there has to be someone from the vendor. You know, if you're having tastings of Jim Beam, there has to be somebody from Jim Beam there doing the tasting. It's not, it's not, it's not an excuse to set up a bar.
So couldn't they have a bar, actually a bar in a grocery store? Like, they do at the Whole Foods in Pasadena?
Alcohol service? With mixing martinis?
Yeah, it's a grocery store, but they actually have a bar in there.
Well, I mean, if they did that, we would probably consider that a combination supermarket tavern, and follow those rules.
What's next? What's next, they going to do with plastic bags?
That's coming, well, that's already in.
No, that's what you put your drink in.
Just to be, you know, everybody honest, I think, you know, what does it take to just put that, you know, additional words in there?
I was actually thinking of the Whole Foods over in Pasadena when I saw this, and I thought, wow, that's a lot of bar.
Okay, well, I mean, we can take that as a recommendation and try to, I mean, in between now and the council hearing, review the ABC regulations and see...
All right.
What's the best way to word that?
If you're going to look into that, then look and see how long they've had it, whether or not they've had issues with it, and what has been their challenges. Let's not summarily do away with something that we don't know much about. So that's all I have to say.
All right, well, perhaps we could just note that as an area of concern for the commission as opposed to...
Look into it.
A strict recommendation, one way or the other.
How much more do you have on the...
APs?
The presentation?
Oh, a lot.
Okay. So you want to just touch on the biggest points of the presentation, and then if we have questions, we can ask it.
Okay, you want to hold your questions to the end then?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Just, we don't have to go into detail with each one, but just...
All right.
The highlights.
So I also wanted to let you know about, there was some, some efforts made to try to compensate for the removal of the public hearing forum itself. And the best way that we come up with doing that was to try to get notification for projects out as early as we can. This is obviously something that, public hearing or no public hearing, the community will always want to know what's happening sooner rather than later, naturally. So our information systems department is putting forth a great effort in this, and what they're doing is setting up a system where people can get what we call their weekly activity reports, and... and reminder to check those in our planning project maps. These are already available online, but what we're doing is putting up a system where people are notified whenever those reports are updated. So they can, it's a reminder, an email to their home to check these. And people can sign up on our website to get these emails that remind them that the new applications have come in and to check the map for where they're located. And, yeah, this is just what they will, what they will get as a reminder. And this is what they'll be directed to. On the right is a map of all the current applications. And this is a way that you can find out what's happening in your neighborhood long before there's a notice for a public hearing. This will get posted as soon as it's entered into our computer tracking system. This will get, before our planner even review the application, maybe even before the planner knows that it's been assigned to them. And what is on the left is the weekly activity report, which gives some more information and gives the assigned planner's name almost always. This is a kind of a blow up of it. Left hand is listed addresses. The next column is a description. And there's further descriptions to the right. And then all the way at the end is a case, the case planner. If it hasn't been assigned, you can always call and check to see. But usually, the majority of cases, the great majority of cases have been assigned by the time this gets posted. So again, to recap, this is the way that people can sign up to get reminders to check these whenever these have been updated. Okay, so, design review. Glendale is known for the thoroughness of its design review. We probably have the most rigorous and far-reaching design review of any city in Southern California, for sure. Currently, our code section on design review applies it to all new construction and to most building alterations. There are only a handful of things that don't get design review at all. We do have staff-reviewed exemptions from design review. And the word exemption is a little bit misleading. It makes it sound like it's just a rubber stamp, where in fact, it's not the case at all. It just means that it's not, doesn't go to the board for hearing. But staff is definitely looking at it. And believe me, there are plenty of times where there are extensive negotiations before someone gets a design review exemption stamp. And again, as I described earlier, we do have the ability to kick these up from staff exemption to board review. In most zones, the DRB is review authority. Historic Preservation Commission, City Council, and even this august body here is the design review authority in the SR zone for private projects. And we do have a situation that pertains in redevelopment, former redevelopment areas and in the downtown specific plan where there are certain thresholds where staff can, where projects are not exempt from design review, but they can be approved and reviewed and approved by staff alone. And this basically is commercial buildings under 10,000 square feet. It's happened a handful of times with new construction that Jay will go over and with a number of facade changes. So obviously, these applications are received. The notification is posted online, as I just demonstrated. When it comes time for a hearing, the sign's posted on site, mailed notice. We have a standardized staff report, which is developed in conjunction with the community. And the consultant suggested that we streamline the report, but that, that will happen in terms of our reporting of, repetitive reporting of some things. We're not going to change the standards by which we judge them. The mass, the site planning, the massive scale, the architectural design and details, that's all going to stay in. So we are proposing to take the idea of the administrative design review, which exists in downtown and redevelopment areas, and apply it to some other zones as well. All new buildings in single-family zones will still go to design review board. All new, single-family homes will still get a full public hearing before the design review board. The proposal, as developed by staff and it has agreed to by consensus of the task force, was that additions and alterations could be reviewed and approved by, at a staff level. Again, we can kick them up to the board review if we can't come to an agreement with the applicant about what constitutes something which is acceptable to be approved at the staff level. If the staff cannot make the findings of compatibility, we either deny it or tell the person, "Take your chances with the board."
Sounds like just an odd way to deal with it.
Well, it's actually quite mirrors current process.
If we can, well, let's hold the comments. Let him just get through the presentation and then we'll, we'll jump in all at the same time.
And we're not, the thresholds below which you can get a design review exemption are not changing. In other zones, we're proposing to have admin design review for multifamily buildings of six or fewer units and less, and 10,000 or fewer square feet. Again, the exemption level is the lower level. The basement, shall we say, the basement floor is not changing. So the way design review exemptions work is not changing. You either get a stamp off after we've reviewed it or it gets kicked up to the design review board. So here's how administrative design review would work. Again, it's very similar to how DRB works. When the applications come in, they're going to get posted on that map and listed in our weekly activity report. So people can see them, you know, long before any notice gets mailed out. A notice will be mailed out of a future decision. A three-foot, three-foot by four-foot sign posted on site. Again, we will have all the analysis posted online when that notice goes out so people can see what we're talking about and what we're recommending as conditions of approval. Again, people can ask to be notified as a decision if they wish. I should also let you know, this is really, doesn't really, this will involve a change to the city's, excuse me, fee resolution, which you are technically now charged with recommending approval on, but appeals of administrative, these new administrative-level approvals or denials, both in design review and with the use permits, we are going to propose to the city council that that be half the existing appeal fee. That'd be, the existing appeal fee of a DRB case or a CUP is about $1,000. We're going to propose that it be about $500.
That's, it's coming from an AUP?
Yes, from the administrative level review. So, you know, again, that is a way of making it easier if someone really feels that this needs a hearing.
Public hearing.
So again, with the administrative design review, we have two paths we can take. The left path, the path on the left there, is when we do not kick it up. There's a staff analysis and a decision. Anyone who is unhappy, applicant or neighbor, can appeal it to the design review board. And then the DRB will be able to sustain, reverse, or modify that decision. If we do decide to kick it up, we're going to go on the, follow the path to the right, where we'll just have, this is the normal process. There'll be a, instead of staff analysis, it's going to be a staff report, which is going to contain basically the same information. Instead of a decision, it'll be a recommendation to the board. And appeal goes to city council, as it does now. I believe that Mr. Platt here is going to show you some examples that we showed to the task force. And I want to emphasize that the initial proposal was that, for design review, again, that alterations and additions to single-family homes would be what we would move to administrative-level review in the single-family zones. So what we did for the task force was to assemble the entire universe of projects from the last three years that had received approval and had been constructed so people could see what the plans were and how it really turned out in reality. We did not cherry pick this in any manner. Everything that fit those criteria, we showed to the task force. I'll let Jay handle it from there.
At the staff level, we recognize that this is a big change to take on more administrative responsibility. So in meeting with the task force, we really wanted to emphasize how things have changed in the way we do design review in Glendale in the last seven years or so. We actually looked back at the projects for the last six years that have been built so that we could really show the task force members and now show the planning commission and the public the level of ability that we have to kind of stay in sync with the design review board. We have a good understanding of what the board looks for and how they interpret the guidelines that we use to guide all of our design review decisions. And we also have a level of ability to kind of recognize good projects. We've also developed an ability to recognize projects that are likely to be controversial. And as Tim has mentioned several times, just as with the AUP with design review, we're going to have the ability to kick things up to the board. And we're not going to be afraid to do that. In many cases, that's how we work with applicants to get designs that we think are compatible and appropriate. And as soon as an applicant is asking for something that we don't think is going to work in the neighborhood or on the street, we're going to have the ability to kick things up. So with your permission, we have a series of slides showing some of these projects. We did cherry pick a little for this meeting because we didn't want to go through the extensive number of projects we looked at with the task force. You may still think this is an extensive number of slides, so let me know if you want me to...
Can we let the lights down a tad?
Yeah, the problem, yeah, GTV often asks us not to.
Just for the sake of time, if we just go through the highlights so we can...
I could go through without, yeah, I could go through without describing individual projects unless you have a question, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We broke, we broke the projects down into several categories, starting with some facade grant work that we did when the redevelopment agency existed, where the city, through redevelopment funds, was able to offer money for people to improve the facades of their commercial project or their commercial properties. So here's a sampling of some of the work we did. In many cases, there were modest improvements, but in every case, we thought that the new work was both an asset to the existing building as well as to the street and the community. So these are some of the commercial buildings in the San Fernando Road project area and some on Brand Boulevard. You may know this building where Rough Draft Studios was and is now kind of a high-end furniture store. Kind of brought back some of the aspects of the earlier building and then also created a modern facade treatment. And this project shows that we're working in various veins. We recognize some projects are going to look more contemporary, some projects are going to look more traditional. And we have a fluency working with the design teams and the applicants that we work with to achieve projects that we think are quite successful and assets to the street. We also were able, in the redevelopment areas, to approve kind of larger-scale projects up to new construction projects. This was a ground-up project that you're probably all familiar with for the Glendale Credit Union. Again, looking in a more traditional vein. This is the Gateway Pet Hospital on Los Villas. This was new construction as well as a major remodel of the existing building. And this work was all done at staff level. This is the former Chamber of Commerce building across from the Central Library, still under construction in this photo. And here's an example of a former warehouse that was converted through both facade grant and then design review of the second-story addition. In terms of the breakdown of commercial, multifamily, and residential, I believe, Tim, Tim walked you through the thresholds, so I won't repeat these unless you have any questions about the thresholds. But here's a series of examples. And what we did in the analysis for the task force was not only look at the projects, we also looked at the public input into the projects. And then we also compared the staff conditions and whether we recommended approval of the design, approval with conditions or denial, and whether the DRB agreed with staff, was stricter than staff, or had a looser opinion about the design than staff. In almost all cases, with minor variations, the staff opinion and DRB ultimate decision were very much the same. And you'll see as we slide, just go through these quickly, that very often, we had zero speakers, very often, we had one speaker. These aren't projects that have been generating a lot of, you know, public input, at least at the hearings. So this is Trader Joe's up in Montrose. This is the building you're probably familiar with, just a block or so up on Glendale. This is a small addition at a market. And this reflects some of the almost absurdity of some of the projects that we have to take to DRB just because of the thresholds that we have, where there was just a small addition made at the front of the building. Very easy determination for the board to make, to the point that they sometimes wonder, "Why are these projects coming to us?" And then this was an interesting project. This was just a remodel of an existing Burger King. And this is an example of a project that would definitely have been kicked up to DRB if staff had had the ability to do this without DRB review because the applicant just was, made this a very, very difficult project to move through the process. So the final outcome, we're happy with, but because it was so hard to get it there, this would have gone to DRB, without question. In our multifamily zones, these are the thresholds that Tim addressed earlier. And here are just a few examples of the variety of work that we look at. This is a very small addition that was made to the back of a single-family house to create a duplex, very much in keeping with the style of successful architectural design. This is a project where there was a back house that was proposed for construction. Again, if we were working with an applicant who said, "I want to build a new unit in the back of this property in a multifamily zone," and they told us, "But we really don't want to change this front house. We're going to keep this stucco box the way it is." We would say, "No, we're going to send you up to the board. We'd like to work with you on looking at this whole site as an entity and try to improve the appearance of both parts of the site, including the rear building." What we learned from a couple of these projects, this one and I believe, actually, both of these, we're learning from the DRB also as we go along. And this one's probably a better example, where originally, staff thought because the house was so far toward the back of the lot, the new construction, that the level of design detail might not be as important. And the board was like, "No, we really believe that this house, the back part, should be well-designed, even though only part of it's visible from the street." And we've taken that to heart, and this is an example we use regularly in our current design review.
Hello, Jewel City residents. I'm Jake Sinweb. And on behalf of the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale, Neighborhood Services, and the Public Works...
On Lexington, the issue here was seemingly... This is the highest number of speakers I think we have on any of the examples that we're looking at. This turned into a giant infighting situation in a condominium complex between owners and the HOA or the board. Ultimately, council reversed the DRB decision, but both staff and DRB believed that this building benefited by having contrasting textures. The owner had removed the siding in some locations and turned it into kind of more of a stucco box. It's showing again that we were very much in sync with DRB on a fairly subtle issue, but that ultimately, that got reversed. And then this is a Habitat for Humanity project that we're all very happy with, and staff and board agreed on the ultimate design. I think everyone is most interested in how this is going to affect single-family construction. As Tim mentioned, all new, single-family construction will automatically go to the board. And while staff will have the ability through the administrative review process to work to approve additions and alterations, basically remodels also, we are very aware of community concerns. We've become very good, I think, at understanding what the community wants, and we're not going to be afraid to tell owners that we're going to have to kick something up to the board if we don't think we can comfortably approve it. We'll also be very responsive to input that we receive during the process after the community has a chance... After the community has a chance to look at the materials that are posted online, we'll be able to take that advice and take it very seriously. I know there may be some concern about whether that's going to happen, but I can assure you that at staff level, we do take those things seriously. And when we think points are germane, we're going to work with applicants to get to the point where we can approve it. If we can't get to that point, we're going to deny projects, and an owner would have to appeal to the design review board. This is an example. We usually start with the kind of light examples and move into the more complicated ones. This was an addition at the rear of the property, completely invisible from the street, but it had to go to the board because of its square footage. This is the type of project we'd be able to approve without a hearing. This was a modest addition made to the side, but it was visible from the street. Board and staff felt it was very much in keeping with the house and the community, and ultimately, it was approved. This is a remodel. We have a number of examples. This one is under construction. We couldn't get a good picture, but this shows the type of project. We're going from a modern house to a modern house. We very much felt that this was an improvement to this property, and the board agreed on this one. This is more of a lateral shift. The owner had a house, they wanted to remodel it. We thought, yeah, that looks okay. It's not a radical change to the house. This is another type of project where the board sometimes wonders why they're looking at this rather than us being able to approve it more easily. This is another shift that's kind of more radical, because we went from this kind of Brady Bunch ranch house up at the top picture to a Spanish colonial revival house. We approved this, or we felt this project was a good proposal, and the DRB approved it because the detailing of the new house was excellent, and it very much fit the kind of the shape and the form of the existing house. If someone had come to us with that existing house and said, I want to put Spanish tile on the roof but not change anything else, we would say, no, that's completely inappropriate. And if you really, really want to do that, you're going to have to go to the board. This is an example, again, of kind of the type of project where the, it's just kind of a little strange to go to the board. The only reason this was heard was because of the, if you look at the lower-left picture, thank you, that small addition, which is actually set back from the facade, represented enough square footage that we had to take it to the board. Two-story, second-story additions, I know, are of great concern in the community, and not every second-story addition is the same. Some very much have a very limited impact on the house or on the neighborhood. We also know that some second-story additions, if you're on a block where someone's proposing the first two-story house on the entire block, we know that community is going to get upset about this. We know that, I can't say in every case, but as of now, I'm thinking, pretty much every case, if that's the situation, we're going to be kicking that up to the board. But we also want the planning commission and the public to be aware that there are proposals that we think could be appropriate, especially neighborhoods that are mixed with one- and two-story houses. Here's an example of the little house at the top, which came forward with a second-story addition as well as kind of a change of just the general architectural character. And I wasn't involved in this project, and when I looked at it as one of the examples, I was like, whoa. Everyone, we thought that was okay, the board thought that was okay, because it seemed a little different than proposals that we normally see. But then, when I went to look at the context of the neighborhood, and it's really important to remember that we're not looking at any of these projects in isolation, we looked very carefully at the context of the neighborhood, the development patterns in the neighborhood, and just the way it looks and feels. We saw in this case, a neighborhood of mixed one- and two-story houses. It's kind of hard to say, you can't build a second story. But we thought this one in particular was respectful of the kind of conditions on the street, where you have a one-story house on the left, a blocky two-story house on the right. And the proposal kind of split the difference, shifting the second-story volume to the right side next to the two-story house and leaving the lower one-story volume kind of facing onto the house next door. So these are the examples that we have. We showed a number of additional ones to the task force, but we pulled these out just to give you an idea of what they were reviewing when they gave us their opinion that it was appropriate to move forward with this recommendation. And Tim Foey will talk about hillsides.
Hey.
Thanks, Jay.
Conditional use permits for hillsides. In the ROR, in ROS zones, which are the hillside residential zones, single-family zones, not every single-family, new single-family house needs a CUP, but you do need a CUP if your lot is less than 80 feet wide, if the slope exceeds 50%, or if you're moving more than 1,500 cubic yards of earth. And I just, to be clear, that means it's not that it all has to be exported, 1,500 cubic yards exported, they just be moved from one place to another on the site, and you still need a CUP. So again, current process, has this going to a planning hearing officer, which is a senior planner or principal planner, for a conditional use permit? It doesn't go to DRB. The appeals of the hearing officer go to the planning commission before DRB has heard By the time it gets to DRB, the DRB feels that their power has been greatly restricted, that their ability to change the site planning is gone. The public gets a little bit cynical and believes that the approval is already guaranteed in its current form, when it's actually not, the way the code reads. And this process of requiring conditional use permit has existed in the code for a little over 20 years. I think it was maybe 1991, something like that, when DRB was just in its infancy, especially for single-family homes. DRB did not start with single-family homes, that was a later addition to its purview. So perhaps at the time, it was thought that having conditional use permit was, and perhaps justifiably, you know, a safeguard. With the maturation of design review board, the greater involvement by the public, and as well as, you know, our having three design professionals on the community development department staff, we wanted to review this to see if this was still the appropriate way to be reviewing single-family home development. But our proposal is, would be to change review from a conditional use permit hearing to the design review board. The design review board has, in the time that I've been here, the 10 years I've been here, almost always been staffed largely with architects, especially in the last six or seven years. DRB plans will be able to review with city departments on a hillside, most notably, the other city departments that review hillside development would be fire for, you know, firefighting abilities, as well as for the appropriateness of planted materials, engineering for any kinds of grading work, traffic, if there should be enough export to warrant traffic review, and water and power, especially in combination with protected trees, because we've actually already instituted kind of a cross-departmental review process where all the departments are in the same room at the same time reviewing a project, so that generally, water and power and utilities will want to have the shortest route to a house, and we want to make sure that the person in charge of reviewing protected trees is there to comment on that as that decision's being made. So we really tried to integrate this review process among departments, which would continue even if we don't have a conditional use permit.
You're referring to the one-stop meeting, basically, right?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's called the Development Review Committee, is our term for it internally.
It's not the one-stop.
Not the one-stop permit center. It's an internal...
Right. It's an internal...
Committee review that reviews applications. So when we reviewed the applications that we had, we found that those projects which needed to have a public hearing or a conditional use permit because of lot width, insufficient lot width, were the ones that generated the least amount of public interest. There's, I think there's only one case we saw in the last couple of years, and I'll show it to you, I have an example of it, where someone needed to get a conditional use permit for lot width, and actually, it was replacing one house with another, and it was all about protecting views of the hillside. It really had nothing to do with the width of the lot. So we would have the departments continue to review and impose conditions for new single-family projects where there's a great slope or a lot of grading. There's not going to be any change in noticing. I mean, everyone who got noticed of a conditional use permit is going to get noticed at the design review board hearing in all the exact same ways. As a matter of fact, it's probably preferable, because the design review board hearing to take their comments is at 5:00 instead of the 9:30 a.m. Wednesday planning hearing officer meeting. So probably, we're facilitating public input, really. And this here just, you know, emphasizes how this will continue, have all the same amount of public noticing. So these are some of the examples here. This is the case I was talking about, where someone had to get a CUP for insufficient lot width. We measured the lot width at 15 feet back from the property line. You know where that is, Kristen, right there? Yeah, that's actually the upper right-hand corner there is a driveway to the street. So it was one house being replaced with another. The top photo is what the plans were that the hearing officer reviewed, based on the comments that we got and the conditions imposed by the hearing officer. Well, actually, it wasn't even that. It was, the only change, thing that happened here was portion of the building got lowered, and that was actually because of a code problem. They actually had a third story underneath there, and they had to lower it to not have a variance. You can't see the third story here, but there was one. It was an elevator coming from the garage up. And I believe the house has been built, and all the neighbors love it now. This is a project which required a CUP for lot width and for slope. We only had three speakers on this. It was unusual that it crossed property lines, and the proposed driveway had to snake around a whole bunch of oak trees, so that was kind of a complicated review. I guess the important thing to take out of this was that this is an example of what the conditions imposed by the hearing officer all had to do with site planning, which could be done by the design review board as well. And this is an example. The top plan shows the conditional use permit to middle, and after some tinkering with the site plans, you can see that the house, especially the first floor, was kind of shrunk so as to be able to keep more of the natural form of the hillside. And have smaller outdoor areas instead of one big scooped-out backyard with an 18-foot-high retaining wall. But again, architects can do this absolutely as well as the planning staff, and probably better, although I'm very pleased with Laura Stotler and the decision she rendered here. I wanted to put that out there. And this is just a side view of the same property. This is a project which required CUP for lot width. Actually, I don't want to say too much on this because it's under appeal to the city council right now, so I don't want to make too many editorial comments on it. It's a narrow lot, and that presents challenges. But again, I don't know that, you know, the planner is going to be able to come up with better solutions than our board of architects on the design review board can. And this is a case where there was an almost already-developed site there. There'd been a driveway graded and a flat pad graded, and the house just never, was never built. It was maybe 20 years after the grading happened, something like that, a long time, where someone came in with a proposal and to build on the site. And since the flat pad was already graded, there really wasn't much, in terms of conditions of grading, for the planner to do. So this was, I believe that this was denied by the hearing officer. That decision was reversed by this commission and approved, and then reversed by the city council on a 3- to 2 vote. So again, for the, for conditional use permits, and what is now requires a conditional use permit in hillsides, in the ROS and ROR zones, again, all new single-family homes, whether they are in a sloping lot or not, will still require a design review board. Our emphasis has been on site planning. We now have extensive comprehensive design guidelines, which this commission reviewed and were adopted, I think, about two years ago, maybe? And what we would need to do is change the code here to expand the DRB's review authority to be able to impose conditions on grading. Right now, the code spells out what the DRB should be reviewing, and we just need to have language to expand that. A number of miscellaneous items, moving on from CUPs. We propose to eliminate the environmental planning board. This is a board which hasn't met in six years. Its purpose was to review, have a public hearing on a draft EIR, administrative draft EIR before it was released to its public comment period. It's composed of the city attorney, the city director of public works, director of community development. All of those people have staff who are producing this document, so they were just confirming what they'd already. One thing this did do, though, was to provide a form for someone to appeal the decision to have that an EIR should be required for their project. So we could retain that and give that function to the planning commission. But as a matter of fact, I believe the last time that this board met, that was a topic. Somebody was being asked to do an EIR because of historic impacts, and they disagreed, and EPB said, yes, you should do it. There was a field of the council, council said, yes, you should do the EIR. New condominiums. We propose to have staff review for six units or fewer than where we have staff review for condominium conversions. Parking exceptions. We're proposing this only for the Don't Tell Specific Plan in San Fernando redevelopment areas. It actually currently exists in San Fernando already. It's been a longstanding feature of the code. We propose to switch it to administrative review. When there is a parking use permit for off-site parking, that does get posting on-site. Non-conforming buildings and structures. Many times, a building will have some aspect of it which is non-conforming, a stairway or maybe a room which extends out into setback area. People can, if, for safety reasons, they can replace it exactly as-is. Well, sometimes, people want to replace it but change it a little bit. If there is a case where that doesn't increase any impacts to the neighbors, we'd like to have the ability to be able to grant a little bit of flexibility to these alterations of minor projects. You could not increase floor area under this. So we're holding the line on that. But it's just for location or size, like if you have a stairway which is four feet wide, okay, you can make it five feet wide. Patio structures, garages where people actually want to increase the size of their garage, times you can't do it if it goes into a setback. So it just provides a little bit of breathing room. Another item is administrative exceptions, which is kind of like a minor variance. Currently, I believe every numerical standard in the code, excepting FAR, you can apply for a variation of up to 10% from that standard. It's not automatic. You still have to prove that it's needed and that there won't be impacts. The proposal here is to increase that to a 20% exception. We did some research on the 38 variance cases we heard in the last three years, and of those, about a quarter would be at least partially affected by this administrative exception. What we have found with administrative exceptions is that if you give someone an easy way to ask for a small... give someone an easy way to ask for a small change, it motivates them to make their project, um, it motivates them to remove larger variations from code. So if someone wants to, these are building or in, have an exception of thirty percent of a numerical stan- standard, and they have to get a variance, they'll be motivated by this to decrease that and try to make it fit within the twenty percent range. So we found that this actually, um, tends to, I mean, in a sense, in that sense, bring projects closer to conformity with code. So that concludes our presentation. Again, this is just a summary of the topics that, um, we've heard here.
Thank you. We have questions? Oh, we have more cards. Great.
No question.
Yep.
One of the miscellaneous items, uh, the last item that you talked about, twenty percent of administrative exception, does that include both, uh, commercial and residential?
Yeah, it's any numerical standard in the code. For example, um, if there's a five-foot required setback, twenty percent of that would be one foot, being able to encroach by one foot into the setback. Well, that's, that's how we would measure the twenty percent.
Okay.
Lights.
If we have any really important questions, we can ask him. Short, but we, we have eight, we have eight cards, so I just want to make sure we get through this in, in a reasonable time.
May I propose we hear, uh, the public comment, and then we can comment?
Good, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Foy. First, we have a number of cards. I'm going to start off with Judy Kendall.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Judy Kendall, president and CEO of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to, uh, speak on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. The Board of Directors of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce at their March nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting, adopted a resolution regarding city staff's request for the city council to initiate zoning code changes to allow for increased consistency, clarity, and quality in Glendale's Planning and Neighborhood Services Division application review and regulatory processes. The result, that resolution reads as follows. The Board of Directors of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce supports the concept of city staff's request for the city council to initiate zoning code changes to allow for increased consistency, clarity, and quality in Glendale's Planning and Neighborhood Services Division application review and regulatory processes, with the understanding that if staff's request is approved by the city council, chambers directors will be invited to serve on the code advisory group and participate in this process. Further, the board reaffirms the importance of maintaining Glendale free from fees, which would be, or potentially become, or be like, a business license tax. Following city council approval of scat, staff's request, three of our board members served on the code advisory group at all but the first of the meetings. We commend the city staff for the thought and time given to holding these meetings and to most of the suggested or the proposed code changes, and believe that most are in the best interest of the city, residents, and the business community. However, in these meetings attended by the board members, there was little discussion about the business registration certificate, how it would be implemented, and what fee would be charged, although I see tonight, um, there was reference made to a hundred and ninety-eight dollars with twenty-five percent, um, with the, in the years following. But that was on the screen related to the, the zoning use certificate, so I'm a little bit unclear about that. The suggested changes to the code that were discussed during the meetings that we participated in were taken back to our, our chambers executive council and to the board of directors, and at our September board meeting last month, the following position was voted, voted upon and approved. So this is the, the official, um, Glendale Chamber Board of Directors' position on this. The Glendale Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors supports the draft modification to the Glendale Municipal Code contained in the draft planning streamlining task force ordinance, with the exception of the creation of a business registration certificate described in proposed chapter five point one hundred. Chapter five point one hundred should be deleted in its entirety. While we understand the need for tracking businesses, we're extremely concerned that this will become, or is, yet another tax for businesses that are already heavily burdened, um, both at the city, state, and national level. Uh, the fact that Glendale has no business license tax is the reason many businesses have been attracted to our city. We're requesting of city staff, and will request the same of the city council, that chapter five point one hundred be removed from the zoning code changes, and that this body, in your advisory capacity, relay to the council the, uh, concerns of many in the business community. Thank you.
I, I have a question for the speaker. Ms. Kendall, unequivocally, the, the slide said that this is not intended to be a business tax. Is that the issue why you are opposing or de-? And by the way, for, as disclosure, I am part of the Board of Directors of, uh, Glendale Chamber of Commerce. However, I, I did not participate in the decision-making of that, uh, of what Judy is here for. Is, is the business tax the issue? If, if you are totally unequivocally, uh, basically stated that it, there is no business tax on this issue, then would the chamber be okay with this part?
I ca- I can't say that, because we've taken the position we've taken. We are very concerned that this could become something else. Um, it's, I think it's intended to be something good right now, and certainly, um, having all of the businesses registered would also be, um, advan- advantageous for the chamber at some point. But we are very concerned about, maybe not right now, but in the future, this becoming something else. It would be very easy for it to be changed.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think the very first meeting we had with the task force was all about the, the license.
We were not invited to that meeting.
Yeah, so that, that's an important meeting that you guys should have been, um, part of, but I'd like, if staff can just explain what, what it is, and I know, I know it's not really a license.
Oh, yeah, I would be happy to. And, would you like me to explain now, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, and actually, we have had this conversation with members of the chamber on the side. The, what you have, we have in place right now is zoning use certificate. Every business in Glendale is required to have a zoning use certificate, and if they leave, the business replacing them is required to have a zoning use certificate. What we are recommending is to replace the zoning use certificate, which is already in place, mind you. We're not recommending something in addition to that, to be transformed into this business, uh, registration license with the added, uh, process that it would be renewable and is subject to renewal every year. There are two things that we accomplish with that. Number one, we, we have, uh, we, we keep tracking the businesses right now. Right now, there are businesses that leave and are replaced by other businesses, and we have no record of that. And, or they're in business without having a zoning use certificate, which is a violation of the zoning code, and they may or may not be aware of it. With this requirement, nobody will be violating anything. Everybody would be aware of where they stand. And also, the other part is that there, from time to time, we have rogue businesses that have negative impacts on the surrounding residential, residences or surrounding neighborhoods. Right now, the only tool that we have is code compliance and code enforcement and the regu- the planning and zoning regulations that sometimes can take us months and months and months to build a case to revoke as a, a land use process. With a business, uh, uh, registration license, we will be able to suspend their license and deal with the issue at hand immediately and correct the zoning code violations or any other violations that may occur, and then bring, uh, the, the rogue business, so to speak, back in compliance with what, how we like to, uh, address things without a lot of headaches, such as the ones that we have experienced. You may be familiar with some of the cases we've had to deal with that took years and years of court cases and building a land use, uh, issue to, to deal with them. In this case, would, it would be a lot simpler, and, uh, the renewal would be one quarter of the zoning use certificate, which is approximately fifty dollars per year. And that's a, the fee would not, will barely, if at all, cover the cost of administration. It, it's just simply an administrative process.
I would also add that anything which is a tax, a revenue-generating tax, by state law, Prop. two eighteen requires, uh, approval of two-thirds of the voters. So, I mean, I suppose someone could imagine that we would try to sneak something through, but, um, I would think that this community has shown itself, especially in the last few years, to be quite sophisticated in these kinds of matters.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Rick Barnes.
Good evening, commissioners, planning staff. Uh, I was, I'm Rick Barnes. Uh, I'm here as an individual, not representing realtors, but, uh, I did go out and speak with a lot of builders, a lot of different property owners regarding this, and I was also on the, uh, the committee and reviewed this, and a lot of them were very, very positive with the results that they see that changes could make. A lot of us also believe that our, our city planning staff is extremely capable of making decisions, and at the same time, we have this backup where public notification's taking place, so I'm really hoping that you will pass this and pass it on to city council for their review. That's simple.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, we have Ira Bland.
Good evening, Commissioner and staff, commissioners and staff. I am Ira Bland. I am the president of the Glendale Association of Realtors. I am here not because our association has taken a position one way or the other on this tonight, although we have been most appreciative of being involved in the process of getting to this. We supported, uh, the council's, uh, decision, uh, earlier in the year to go forward with this. My concern right now is, uh, with the business registration, and it's not so much that our association is for or against it, but I have some personal concerns about it, and our association will be taking this up over the next few weeks. I'm not sure what a definition of a business really is. In the real estate profession, realtors are individual contractors. They are their own business people. They may work from home, they may work from a broker's office, they come from all over the state, not just Glendale. They are conducting business in this city. I believe insurance agents also qualify in the same role. I believe there are other businesses that can do the same thing. They may not come under the category of a home office, home business, but they're working out of somebody else's business. We have people that could be working in, uh, anywhere in Los Angeles, and they're, they had, they're an agent, they sell a property in Glendale, they have conducted business. We have seen situations in other cities where if, if somebody doesn't have a brick-and-mortar facility in the city, and they need a, a, a building inspector to go out prior to the close of a sale of a transaction, they may have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars to get that permit, or a business license, or a business registration certificate. So the concern, and what I'm looking for, is, is, is clarification on what constitutes a business, because every realtor, whether they're a broker or just a licensee, they are, they may not have their own company with people and, and whatever, but they're just individuals doing business. Are they going to be required to do a business registration? And if that's the case, I think there will be a lot of unhappy people because they're, they're not, there's no zoning or anything, they're just doing their business, and they're trying to actually help make Glendale better by selling properties in Glendale. So that's really the main issue that I have, is what's, how, how is the city defining a business for purposes of this as it relates to independent contractors? Some of the people that I've talked to before, uh, that have been participating in the commit, in the, in the, uh, ongoing efforts of, of this task force, they believe that there's not clear definition. So as I said at the beginning, we're not here tonight as realtors to take a position for or against. That will be coming during the month, and we are, we are only too happy to support. We obviously have been part of the process, so we think changes are needed. In fact, we've asked for a long time for changes in the process to be, uh, created. So in theory, we're in favor of it, but this business registration and how it affects realtors and even other independent contractors is the biggest issue, and, and that's what I'm looking for feedback on, to be able to take back to our association. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, next speaker, we have Lawrence Kalfian. And can you remind the speakers how much time they have? Five minutes? Excuse me.
Thank you. Good evening, um, members of the planning commission and staff. My name is Lawrence Kalfian, and I was on the task force and, uh, as a representative of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, and I'm also vice president of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, and I'm here this evening, uh, in that capacity. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for their very thorough review of the many aspects of permitting and design review. And I, this evening, I would like to, uh, clarify something, um, on behalf of our homeowners association, uh, so that it does not, um, develop into any misunderstanding. We had a couple of, a number of points that were communicated, um, and they are not criticisms of the report or withdrawals of consensus to the report. They're really mainly, um, questions that we have, um, that I don't know the answers to, and we feel that those are best answered by members of the staff. Um, one, one of the aspects is that we're very grateful that the staff, um, continued to have the five-hundred-foot notice provision in the, uh, notice requirements, that notice would go to people within five hundred feet, um, and that, um, design review would continue for new construction. I mean, yeah, for new construction. And our question really is what is new construction and what is a remodel? Because that can sometimes be a very fine line, and, uh, something might be considered a remodel when it really looks like new construction where many of the walls of a house are torn down. So I think we would just like some clarification on that point. Um, another, uh, question we had is, um, what would be the method by which, um, we could, or any, anyone could, review the contents of any given file for a given project? Uh, because we would like to know, uh, what, uh, comments have been made and how to call attention to them, uh, whatever concerns might, might be there that people might have submitted. We'd like to make sure that those have been made a matter of record. And so that's really more of a mechanical and administrative question that we have as to how that would be handled. Um, another question that we have is that, uh, we're concerned that the, um, in the streamlining changes that are being adopted, uh, we would like reassurance that the design standards themselves are not being changed or relaxed, but just the process by which , uh, they are, um, being reviewed or being applied is changing. And, um, we also had a concern about front facade and major porch changes. That was a question that one of our board members had raised afterwards that had not come up before. So that's, um, pretty much what I wanted to explain, and once again, we want to thank the, um, diligent and very thorough work of the staff on this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have Rondi Werner.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Uh, I'm Rondi Werner, the, um, president of the Adamson Neighborhood Association and a resident of Glendale for over twenty-five years. Um, I attended the task force meetings this summer, and at these meetings, I expressed my concern over the proposed elimination of the CUP process for hillside construction. I had said at the time that hillside lots that had not been developed by now were not likely to be, were, were very likely to be problematic and controversial, and that expediting these projects might not give neighboring residents enough time to consider and respond to the potential impact to their property and property values. We were assured of that. We were assured at that time that the planning department could be trusted to protect the interests of Glendale's homeowners. I'm therefore very disappointed to see last week that a senior planner has recommended the approval of a CUP and multiple standards variations, or variances, to construct a three-story residence on a undersized 4,200 square foot lot with an average slope of 77% in an R1R zone, the 77% being more than half again what the standard is, and also asking for a variance on parking on a very narrow, crowded, dead-end street in my neighborhood. At least six people came to the CUP hearing to voice their, their concerns and oppose this project. They cited, some of their concerns included the fact that the street is already overcrowded and there's no parking. When I myself went there at 9:30 in the morning, I was lucky to get the last spot on the street to get out and take photographs. I was very concerned on how steep the lot was, and that the people directly across from this development would have no scenic view whatsoever. The height was just enough to completely obstruct their view. And for years, they had been told that that lot was undevelopable. So they, they passed on opportunities to have purchased, purchased it in the past, which they would have done if they ever thought that anybody was going to come in and try to develop that. So it scares me that an out-of-town land speculator could receive an approval recommendation on an application with so many standards variances and exceptions that are clearly injurious to nearby property owners. This is a perfect example of why the CUP process should not be eliminated for hillside construction. Maintaining the CUP process would allow concerned homeowners to protest future controversial hillside developments before they reach the design review stage where the costs are higher for the developers as well as the homeowners, since they at that time would have to pay fines or fees in order to protest the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have Merna Stanley. And you have a one, and then there's another one that's a blank?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I was going to address you as the chair of the zoning committee for the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, and then afterwards, or now if you like, as president of the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association, so.
Yeah. I think just keep that all in one five-minute time.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for reviewing this, this packet, this voluminous packet of good grief and, and staff. They have worked laboriously on this and did wonderful presentations. And that said, I have to tell you, I cannot give you any direction that the coordinating council gave the zoning committee. They just received the staff report and the draft ordinance on Friday. They're still, still reviewing it, as you can well imagine. I mean, look how long you've been looking at this, and it was, that was a quick, quick version. So I'm, we're asking that you'd obviously take these comments under consideration, continue this to a meeting perhaps where we would be the only item on the agenda, so we, you could maybe have it more open, so we could, if you had any more questions, even though the public hearing was closed and we had another comment, we could raise our hand or something. But that's for the coordinating council. And I just want to tell you how seriously the coordinating council takes this, is they actually rescheduled their meeting last month so that the members of the zoning committee could attend the last task force meeting. So this, this is a cease change, and we understand it, and we have to give it careful consideration. Number two card for the Verdugo Woodlands. We're not sure. This is such a big change from, from what we, we fought so hard for seven years ago. We finally got what we thought was working pretty well, and then this came up. And I, believe me, I understand, I've heard from every member of the community that how complicated Glendale can be sometimes. So I understand they're trying to streamline it. If, if streamlining is really the issue, if, I'd refer you to the white paper submitted by Alice Griselle that the city asked her to submit. And on page two, if you can just make a mental note of that, she's talking about, about streamlining. And, and not only did she make a recommendation, but she incorporated recommendations from a, a matrix consulting company that was hired by the city even before her. And so she incorporated recommendations which she felt were appropriate. And she said, she suggested that application be reviewed by one body composed of members with a combination of knowledge, expertise, authority, and experience. So if you had a complex hillside project, as Ms. Werner was just talking to you about, just think you could have two design commissioners, two planning commissioners, you could have buyer, you have whoever you wanted. You get in there, listening to this project, and you could all hear what the other person says, and the applicant could get to the process so much quicker. I know that staff, and I agree with them, said that this was just, would overwhelm, would ever overwhelm one body. And I, and I agree, it was. So get two. I mean, work, work with it. You know, you, maybe it can't be done, but I, I think she has some real good things to say in that. And then our association is not so sure that the DRB should be reviewing complex hillside projects independent of the planning commission review, because you do come at it from a different perspective than the design review members do. I'm not sure it's adequate oversight. Thank you again, I really appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Margaret Hammond.
Count my time getting here, I guess by five minutes it'll be gone, won't it?
Don't count that again, too.
My name is Margaret Hammond. I'm a longtime resident of Glendale and am greatly happy to be living here. But over the years, I've stood here many times on, on things that have happened that we did not agree on with some of the things from the city. At this point, I, I mean, I'm saying this because we have very highly trained and professional people, planners. I know all of them for many years and, and other places and things. So it's not even, there's no complaints or anything like that. But what I'm saying is, there are certain things I think that we should keep, that are maybe over the heads or out of the hands of the staff. I particularly question and object to the proposal that the design review process will be eliminated for all additions and remodels. Under this proposal, if I understand it correctly, a property owner could add an entire story. Maybe I, I haven't understood the language properly, because that is, I've seen additions in the area on Adams Hill. I've lived there over 50 years, 55 years, and there are some things that I have seen that are, I, I've complained and raved and ranted, I've gone to city council. So I know that people will do things without permits, without whatever, and I know the staff will have their hands full with doing a lot of the, looking at the, some of the additions and so forth that are going on. And the other thing is that I feel if there's no public appeal and, and we end up, if we object to what's going on, it sounds like it's going to cost us $500 to appeal, or to talk about, or to object to what's going on. Like I had a man, and I went to city council, he added an outdoor toilet to the side of his house, up on stilts, I mean it, like an outhouse. Now, because I objected to that and kept objecting, you mean that I'm going to have to pay $500 or keep looking at his outdoor toilet on the side of his house? I mean, I have to decide, do I want to, you know, think about that before I put out my 500 bucks? Anyway, that's my thinking on it. And, and just remember, we've already done away with one design review board. So, you know, if it's too much for one design review board, like Ms. Stanley said, then maybe we need a second group or committee or whatever to handle the matters that the design review board can't, and if it's overwhelming. Thank you very much. The other feeling is that when staff does it, you know, everybody's taste is different in homes and clothing and whatever, you know? So one staff member might think it's a great idea to let them put on an addition, and another one might look at it and say, or you or I, hey, we don't want that. You know, it looks terrible in our neighborhood. And if you all live here and care about Glendale, we have fought the battle for many years. And we had a terrific man, Dick Murray, and he used to come all the time. And I think that we, after seeing the historic tour on Sunday and the people coming from Redondo Beach, from Santa Monica, from Santa Rosa, and talking in, in an area of our city to the Verdugo up there, just above, it's near Brandon, above Glen Oaks, how wonderful they thought Glendale was. And that was like 500 people. There was, they were odd and, and, these weren't mansions, they were just our homes, our average working man homes from that period. And so I do think that we've worked hard, all of us, to make this city a great place to live and have quality of life.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Can staff clarify the appeal process?
The appeal, the appeal process will, will continue to be in existence on the decisions that if, if the proposed changes are adopted by the city council in the end. In the cases where the administrative process, review process is, is done by staff, that staff's decision can be appealed to a higher authority, in many cases it'll be the design review board. And the appeal would cost, half of the appeal cost, which is today, which is $500. Today, it's about $1,000, something like that. So that's the.
But I, I think also, if it's contentious enough, staff will just take it directly away?
Right. What we didn't really explicitly undermine, underline in this presentation tonight is that staff at any moment has, except for, up until the moment that the notice has been sent out, has the authority if they think, if we think that a, a case is going to be controversial, or the case has enough public interest, really, it's about that, there's enough public interest to warrant a hearing, staff has the authority to kick the case to a hearing requirement.
Right.
And really, it's about making sure that anyway, if there is enough public interest, they have a voice and they, they can be heard about it.
So for small cases, if there's enough interest, if there's enough contention, staff will do it, we won't charge anything. But I think what it does prevent is for something really small for people to, you know, try to kick it up to the board, and then preventing this whole idea of actually trying to streamline these really, really small cases. So that's the purpose of it. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
If I may, there are some questions that were raised, if I may answer them.
Yes, please.
Maybe the planning commissioners may have the same questions. With regard to individual realtors, whether or not they would be subject to business registration license, the answer is no. However, their office, if there is an office where they go to do their business, and that particular office would be required to have a business registration license. We have a home occupation permit right now for people who work out of home, that will not change, that the same situation applies. With, and Mr. Calphayan asked a few questions of clarification, I'd like to answer those. What is new construction versus remodel? The new construction includes everything that, that demolishes more than 50% of the structure base as defined in the code, and/or if a building has been razed and is being replaced, or if there is no building there today. Any of those three situations would be considered new construction and would be subject to review by the design review board, according to the proposal. Review, there was a question on how, what the procedure would be to review files. The way that the administrative review process is proposed, staff would notify the 500-foot radius. The other types of notices that we, we do today would still continue. For example, the poster size three, two by three, three by four. Poster size notice on the site would still be, be applicable. So anyone, and then the name of the case planner, and the phone number, and an email address of the case planner would be on the notice. And people could contact the case planner at their leisure to come and discuss the matter. They could still write comments, and all of the comments and, whether verbally or in writing have been submitted, will be taken into account by the planner who will make the final decision. The final decision will be made and signed by one of the planners who are acting as our hearing officers and who will be continuing to, to make the final decision, or the case planner if it's a smaller case that we think does not require that higher level of review by staff. And afterwards, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add one thing. The drawings and all the submittal materials will also be available for review. Those will be available online through the website as well as in person, so we can make space available for, for community members to come and review the drawings.
And once the decision has been submitted, the decision will be posted online and people can read that, and the, the appeal period will, will still apply. Yes?
Mr. Agani, like an EIR, comments are usually included in EIR, draft EIRs, and then finally EIRs as an appendix. Is that not possible, to put public comments online so that they can be reviewed by the public? Because to me, that seemed like a solution to the question.
That's a very, you know, we did not, so the public comments, I think it is possible if the, and, and we could definitely take that recommendation from the planning commission, that at the time that the decision is submitted, along with the decision, the public comments that have been submitted in writing
Right.
would be also scanned and put online. That is not a problem at all. We could do that.
And I think that if you're going to do that, you need to note that individuals who submit comments, that it will be publicly posted.
Right. And, you know, as it is, they would be on file, but if this is the desire of the, the planning commission to recommend that as part of the procedure, we would be very open to that. So coming, going on to the next item, which was, Mr. Calphayan was correct in that we are not proposing to change the standards of our review, we will still review. Nothing will be exempt from design review, except for what is exempt from design review today. Everything will still be subject to design review. The only change that we're proposing on certain items is that the design review will be done at the staff level with the same noticing as opposed to a public hearing. Remember, the item was about streamlining the process, making it shorter, removing redundancies or additional steps that could be combined with other steps. With regard to front facade, that's a very good question. I think a couple of the examples that Mr. Foy showed, showed that the front facades changed, the architectural style changed to something that was superior. So we are saying that the front facade in a remodel could change, and staff could make that decision if, if staff finds it appropriate. However, staff could find that it's not appropriate, and we might get into an impasse with an applicant. In a case like that, we'll require the applicant to go to the design review board. So we always reserve the right, when we think an applicant is, is recommending inappropriate changes to the facade, to go to the design review board. We have had cases where we have taken something to the design review board where the architectural style was being changed to something better, and the design review board was at a loss is why we did this. Go ahead, please.
My concern with this is that bad behavior is punished by going to the board. And to me, that's not the best way to carry out review. So that's my biggest concern about that process. I think that if there were certain, you know, tipping points where you would say that percentage of the facade has changed and that would require a public hearing, that would be something I think would be more comfort for me and I think for applicants. Because right now, it is very subjective, and, and subjectivity is the least comfortable criteria.
If I may respond to that, Mr. Chair, with all due respect to Ms. Landrigan, the problem with having a numeric threshold is that you may, and we have seen this, we may, we may see really, really lousy, for lack of a better word, recommendations, applications that meet the numeric standard and could pass that threshold and go through with it. The design review process by its very nature is subjective. We're the first to say it is subjective. And we are saying we will do a subjective process. And I, although I full-heartedly agree with you in principle that we should not use the design review process as a punishment, it has worked for us very well, to the, to the extent that we have had to work the exemption process that's at our disposal right now. We have managed to convince many applicants to make projects a lot more modest and a lot more appropriate by telling them, if you don't do that, you won't get exempted from the design review board. Whether or not it's, it's ideal, it won't get exempted from the Design Review Board. Whether or not it's ideal, it works. And in this business, we're being very practical. We're saying, it's subjective. If it doesn't work, we'll send you to the Design Review Board. If you want to make it work, please make it something. We're being very upfront about this, and there's nothing objective about this. And we'd like to acknowledge that. So I leave that to the Planning Commission for discussion, but I, you know, I don't want to shy away from the fact that it is subjective. But then, let me also go on to another set of questions that were asked. I think somebody talked about the elimination of the CUP process would concern them because the CUP process gives them another chance to stop a project or voice their concern. We don't dispute that. That is the case. The CUP process creates another step where people can come and object their concerns. We do think, however, that the CUP process is simply duplicated in the Design Review Process. If the objective of this set of proposals is to streamline, is to eliminate duplications or redundant steps, that's a very good one. We do think that the Design Review Process is a much more appropriate way to discuss all of the things that are discussed in the CUP review. In addition to that, all the things that are discussed at the Design Review Process. We think we can do it all in one swoop. Yes?
I think Ms. Werner specifically made a reference to this being in the hillside area, and I think that you need to address it there because I agree with her. In the hillside area, I don't think the Design Review Board has dealt with the other issues outside of aesthetics and neighborhood compatibility. And although I believe that it is stating now that you're going to do far more on site planning, site planning has always been, in my review of the Board's decisions, incidental, and it should be front and foremost.
What we are proposing is not to continue the Design Review Board's responsibilities as they are. In fact, I think Mr. Foy was very explicit by saying that we're going to transfer the responsibilities that are now laid out separately, in a separate process, on the hearing officer to the Design Review Board as well. Please keep in mind too, that the staff writes a very detailed staff report, analysis and recommendation to the Design Review Board. And in that analysis, staff addresses everything, including site planning and everything else that's covered in the CUP process. Today, the staff report covers that in the CUP hearing, and then covers the rest in a Design Review Board hearing. We could combine the two in one hearing, one staff report, one review.
I would also add that in the last few years, I mean, it's my opinion that our staff's analysis of capabilities in reviewing site planning in hillside houses has really developed. I mean, it's far more sophisticated and far-reaching than it was just a few years ago, and that's not going to stop. That's going to be part of our report to the Design Review Board. Right now, once it comes to the Design Review Board, maybe the reason, partially the reason that you don't see the kind of site planning analysis you'd like is that in hillside areas, they feel their hands are tied. Because they have to stay consistent with the already, the plan's already approved by someone else.
And I'm going to go down the list of the issues that I heard, and Ms. Stanley and others mentioned the difficulty of conveying all of the information that they have learned through the review process, through the committee process, to their respective groups. I would just like to, and we understand that, it's a very voluminous and tedious set of things to describe to the people you're representing. So I would like to offer staff's availability between now and the time of the City Council to go at least one, maybe two meetings per week we can accommodate. If any particular group would like a comprehensive presentation and discussion of this so that their membership can understand this better, staff will be available for that. We do not want to put the entire burden on the people who graciously gave their time and their attention in the advisory committee. So that is available to them. Then, yeah, I would like to, Ms. Hammond mentioned her fear of projects not being subject to design review, and horrendous projects coming into play. That will not happen. As I mentioned earlier, we are not in any way throwing out our standards and our high standards of design review. We will still have design review. We are simply transferring some of it from a hearing to a staff review process. And I think that concludes the list of items that I heard the speakers raise, and if I didn't respond to any of them, we'll be happy to respond.
Yeah. Mr. Director, I think the letter that we have from Northwest, one of the issues that they had was the second-story additions, and that is particularly really cumbersome when you compare it to just an addition on a site and so forth. So if you want to address that, and I know, all of this goes back to two things. Number one, trusting your staff. Number two, the fact of the matter that thresholds are not changing. The process is changing, and the thresholds are not changing. And if we come to agreement with that, if we agree to that, then the rest can come easy. But can you please explain the second story?
Yes, and that's a fair comment. Let me say a couple of things. A second-floor addition would be a remodel and addition, and that would fall under the review by staff. However, the requirement of story poles will still apply. The privacy standards and considerations that we have in place will still apply. And staff still has the authority to say that in this particular case, we think it's a too-complex an issue, too many people might be impacted, and we might, we will still have the authority to review something, to require something to go to the Design Review Board if we think the impacts are significant, or they could be controversial. Three things in that regard. But again, I would like to point out that even today, all of those cases are really clearly analyzed and outlined and recommended on by staff in the staff report. In most cases, if not all, the Design Review Board is making the decision that staff is recommending based on their analysis. We are relying a lot on the staff's ability to analyze and make recommendations that seem to work, to say those recommendations could be done as decisions. We think we have the ability to do this, and if not, we can always send them up to the Design Review Board.
I've been requested to get a quick break.
Oh, alright.
So commissioners can...
Break.
Yeah, take a break and then come right back. So we'll do a quick, just a couple minutes, and then we'll come back so we can wrap this up quick.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
He's taking a break, everyone.
You want to be here, please?
We are ready to hear.
But the answer is no.
What's that?
The answer is no.
Okay.
We can be here as soon as you want.
Good night.
Thanks for coming.
Are you going to go to the event tomorrow?
You mean the MGM?
No, oh, no. There's the planning event at the train tracks.
I am flying out tomorrow after...
Oh, meeting with Google or Apple?
Very close.
Yeah?
Very close.
Yeah.
Meeting with some of the investors.
Muscular seizure, right, from a statin?
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
Google.
PayPal.
Oh, PayPal, oh.
Well, I have the gospel.
Yeah.
It happens to you.
Wow.
Arms or the legs.
Great. So you're meeting them?
Some days are better than not, but it's not necessary.
And they call.
Yeah.
They're very limited bend and then put it on there.
What happened with the announcement on Orange?
Well, I didn't know that's what it was. I thought I had over exercised. But then it was like, the pain got so bad I...
Yeah, I'm reading every word to see, you know, what the...
So the next time my doctor wants me, I said, "What are you talking about?" Right. You know, I've already lost my taste for one drug. Now I can't walk.
Not to mention the directions.
Not having an eternality.
Oh, that one. I saw. That's the one? Oh, why is it a secret? That was unexpected.
Let's go, let's go, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Menucha. All right. Where's Ms. Landrigan?
She just took a break.
Oh, okay.
Oh, God. Next time, order a larger brother.
You're fast.
It's all the coke that I'm drinking, I think.
Don't worry about it.
It's getting a little warm here.
Well, I think it's free to take a look. When we were there, it looks like a really beautiful Batsholder fireplace. And it's a guy... Yeah, it's pretty cool. Batsholder, totally, yeah, very recognizable. I can walk in and do a Batsholder tile. It's pretty common. You know, I really hope... So we were looking at that, and we were like, "Oh, wow." And the docent is then like, "It's not, some people think it's an owl, but it's really a floral design." And when you look, yeah, it's got a, yeah, I think it's definitely both. They're a little, yeah, if it didn't have a little feet, I'd say no, or maybe not. I don't remember seeing that, but it looks like that, yeah. Yeah, some of the houses were nice. And that's the one that's the actual restaurant house.
The floor that was razed that you were talking about?
No, it's, there's a...
It didn't say really on your phone?
No.
It didn't show?
Oh.
Now you can say it.
Good. Great. I trust whatever you do.
Oh.
What were you guys... Great. All right.
Okay.
Oh.
Our colleague.
Oh, okay. All right, we're going back in session, reopening our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for waiting. Okay.
Hold on.
Who are we? Oh, okay. Thanks.
They're taking a break.
Great. He's taking a coffee break. Said he's not ready to. Okay, we're going back into session from our recess. All right, questions? Ms. Landrigan?
Mr. Hagani, I have a couple of other thoughts here. The Development Review Committee, will that report be online, and will the names of all of the, and all the commenters be included online?
No, the Development Review Committee right now, and we intend to keep it that way, is really supposed, we want it to be casual discussion, that the first blush, when an item is coming before us for review, we get together with other departments in a comfortable, casual way to discuss really all the concerns that come up. And the intention is just that. We are trying to troubleshoot on any items that might come up later on for the applicant ahead of time so we can be ahead of the game. If we formalize it overly, it'll be just another review process, which is something we're really desperately trying to avoid. Right now, we are doing that as a way to aid the case planner and the applicant, really, in troubleshooting ahead of time.
I will add that the conditions that these departments suggest absolutely will be included in the...
Staff report.
Yes, and proposed decision letter, what have you, yes.
And they are today.
Absolutely, yeah.
And they are today.
All right. Mrs. Werner's example of the 77% slope, the small lot and the building there does concern me when I heard that, and I think it certainly concerns the neighborhood. So one of the issues I have is that the combination of variances, CUPs, used variances, parking variances, all combined, would seem to me to really trigger a public hearing as opposed to a staff approval.
And they would if there are those discretionary reviews included. But if the issues could be combined under the Design Review Process, there's nothing that would prevent, well, nor staff would eliminate that information from the Design Review Process. And if it's a brand-new house, which in this case I believe it is, it will go to a public hearing with detailed information from staff, and if staff's recommendation today is for it to be approved, that will probably be likely the same recommendation. And the community has the same opportunity to come and oppose it. I believe the issue was that they have the opportunity to oppose it twice today, as opposed to once in the future. Yes, we don't dispute that. However, is once not sufficient for a public hearing? When there is an appeal process available afterwards, will we have to continue adding? We were asked to come up with a process whereby we remove unnecessary steps. We believe that's an unnecessary step. The public will still have a chance to come and object to staff's recommendation and disagree with staff in a Design Review Board process. Maybe the Planning Commission believes that they should have that opportunity twice, which is fine, but we're recommending to eliminate that one step.
Not the entire Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission is being answered.
And there is nothing in the, the project as described by Mrs. Werner, there's nothing in that that staff is proposing to move to a staff-level review. Only thing that would change in that project is that the hillside CUP would instead be shifted to DRB.
All right. Mrs. Stanley's request that there be more time to comment on this because it seriously taxed me, and I usually have time, but I was traveling and I was reading it on my iPad. But I truly appreciate your offer to discuss this with the homeowners' association, but the problem is, is it will have made a determination, and that kind of comment period should have the gravitas of carrying that information to the council if it's going to be done that way, if we're not going to be able to hear it and take that into our deliberations. And to me, that seems, you know, actually, I would really have loved if we did this two days in a row at the next meeting too, so that we could continue it, because it's so important. And I think there's so much great stuff in here that is really important that we all understand it. But I also think there's some little areas that give us discomfort, and it's kind of hard to go to that in the last meeting. And, you know, I hear people's stomachs growling, and none of us are growling, but I mean, it's a long time that we've talked about this, but we have definitely not been able to have the dialogue that I think would be rich for this.
Does staff under any time constraint to forward this to City Council? I kind of agree with Commissioner Landrigan that if we have another opportunity, after you have meetings with the community folks, to come back and maybe, you know, let's have this hearing continued.
I'm going to give the same kind of uncomfortable but upfront answer that I gave to the committee members that raised questions like this, and I'm going to say that in public, in front of the TV cameras, and be very upfront about this. We are in the business of discussing things with the community, and we are very good at it. We can discuss things with the community as long as the community would like. In this case, we are proposing some things, that the very nature of our proposal is going to be controversial. There are people who will never, never really agree on these things, and we can go and meet with each group separately and get their full viewpoint, which we, by the way, we're not unaware of, of how they feel about this, and go to another group that feels exactly the opposite viewpoint, and they would not say that as a large group in front of each other, because polite society does not do that. In this case, what we managed to do, we managed to assemble a group of individuals, each one of whom represented one of those groups that has a different viewpoint. And we managed to have a very civil conversation on issues that are very uncomfortable. And we managed to have a very civil conversation on issues that are very uncomfortable to talk about. We don't think by having discussions separately, we will get to anything beyond what we have, quite frankly, I may be wrong. But we, we know very, and we had, we warned the people who asked us to proceed with this, that we spent many years coming up with the process that we have today. Because every time we opened the topic, we added more restrictions. We never eliminated restrictions. If the goal is for, for us to eliminate some of the restrictions and streamline, we then suggested to have a speedy process where everybody can have a civil conversation at the same table for a restricted period of time, and we will make the recommendations, and the decisions makers, such as you and the city council, can make a decide, make a decision either way. It makes you as uncomfortable as it makes staff, and we apologize for that, but that's where it stands. Thank you.
I, Mr. Hagani, I tend to agree with you. I think the process was thorough enough, yet, yet, yet fast enough in terms of bringing the most important issues up front and having everybody discuss it. You know, there is the saying that on the table, there, when, when you, when you walk away from the table and some stuff is left on the table, that's when, you know, all parties are, when, when, when everybody walks away unhappy, that, that's when you know something good may just come out of it, believe it or not. But I think this, I mean, I'm, I'm going over the, the letter from Northwest Glendale Association, Mr. Calfion's comments. And I'm, and I'm seeing what Mr. Hagani, or hearing what Mr. Hagani, and how he has addressed those. And the fact of the matter that none of these thresholds are changing. Again, we go back to the issue of the thrust, not thrust, but trust, and basically giving the process some time to work. This by no means, when it goes to the city council, in my opinion, it's a, and, and I made this comment once when I attended the, the meeting, the, the, the committee meeting. This, this is a work in progress, as it was the Hillside ordinance for years and years and years. There is nothing that is going to stop the Northwest Glendale, or any other homeowners group, or any other business group that is going to come back and ask for revisions if they make sense, or additions if they make sense. I think this planning staff has addressed most, if not all, of the issues quite well. And with that in mind, I don't know why we should wait any longer than what we have, and we should go forward with it.
Are you deliberating, deliberating already?
No, I, I, you know, I just thought I'll share my opinions.
I do have a question. We had a couple of letters about the 10 to 20%. What is it called? The administrative exception. They mentioned Disney. I, I think that's only applied to the downtown area. Is that right?
The 10 to 20% would apply to every numerical standard except for FAR across the city. And let me just stress what Mr. Foy stressed. It's up to 20%, and only if you make the findings, that there are no negative impacts in it. And it, basically, we have to analyze to see if it makes sense.
This is for the parking?
No, it's for every standard that's numeric. It could be setback, it could be height, it could be.
We.
It could also be parking.
I thought we decided something on just for the downtown area. What was that?
This, I don't know what, I don't recall what you.
Parking exception.
Oh, that's the administra, okay, that's the administrative parking exception. That is, no, that's a whole process that's only available in the downtown and San Fernando Road corridor. That is, that is reviewing the parking.
It's part of this.
It's, it could be beyond the 20% in that particular case. But that is, and those cases usually are, they're different. No, 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 that's only with regard to parking administrative exception, which is a form of parking reduction permit. And that has been in place under the redevelopment agency for many years. We're just, we just discussed including that under the city process continuing as the redevelopment agency has disappeared. But this is, this is different. I'm sorry?
Going from 10 to 20.
No, no, that was, that's not 10, 20, or there's no percentages on it. That is only simply requesting to reduce the parking to a different number based on a certain rationale. And that's not here. That's not part of the 20%.
Parking exception and administrative exceptions are two different things. 20% applies to administrative exceptions, which are like minor variance, and applies to every numeric standard in the code, including number of parking spaces.
It could include parking.
Dimensions or dimensions of a planter or side yard setback. Parking exceptions applies only to number of parking spaces, and as is the case now in the code, it's not limited.
Okay, I had it confused.
Very similar terms.
Okay.
This is in response to the fact that two of our colleagues were actually involved on the committee, so they are far more up to speed on it. And that happens to be you, and it happens to be you. And the rest of us are in a situation where I am not discounting the public process. I'm just saying that the process right now where we're hearing this is not as rich an experience as I would hope it would be. I can see if we had it all on one night, it would make it a lot easier on us, and that discussion would be there, and that is what I proposed. It had nothing to do with the existing process that went through. It's, the, the public process of hearing is the planning commission, is a totally different process. And I feel that we have not had the time that is really important. That is why the discussion of making it into another meeting so that that could happen, because it's a whole different hearing. It's a hearing where we're going to make recommendations to the council and basing it on issues that are very, indeed, life-changing, and I think they're very good. But some of them are, as I said, there are some elements that, to me, still need a little bit of discussion. And tonight may not be the night, the best way to finish it up. I also think that I'd like to know a little bit about the 10 to 20% administrative exemption, where you said there would be, there could be no negative finding. So, if that negative finding is not found by staff, but is found by somebody else, would that stop it? How would you know? What is the process of the 10 to 20% administrative exception? That is an, an issue. Is it, is that going to be put on there along with everything else on the little, you know, Yahoo map that has a little ticker up there and says an administration has been applied, exemption has been applied for? And, you know, instead of a five-foot setback, there'll be a four-foot setback, but that's 25%, so that'll never happen, but, so, in essence.
Yeah, it's triggered by, that map is triggered by something being entered, an application being filed, and an application number being assigned. It's automatic. Well, it's not, I mean, well, yeah, yeah, I mean, it, yeah, we don't do it for zucks, probably, but, yeah, yes. It does get included on that map, on that weekly activity report where we show all the applications that have been received. Yes, absolutely.
And then all the findings will be recorded on the final determination?
Yes, absolutely.
And that'll be in the same appeal process? And I do agree with Ms. Hammond that I think the $500 fee is, it's less, but it's really pretty hard to justify for some of the smaller projects. And I would like to ask staff to look at a, a different fee?
Well, if I may, this was raised in the, in the committee meeting as well, much in the same way that appeals. We all, in our hearts, want people to have the ability to appeal. However, we have also seen when appeals are used, perhaps for reasons that are not for the best interest of anyone. And they're used somewhat, what's the word?
Obstructively.
Yeah, obstructively, or just for reasons that are not justified, really. And then we have to put ourselves and the applicants through a whole rigamarole to just re, reestablish the same decisions or not. So, the idea of having a $500 fee, which is really way less than the staff time that we'll have to put into reviewing and dealing with an appeal, is to have, to make sure that people have really something at stake. And if there are enough neighbors that are upset with something, an appeal, $500 is not that hard to raise. People raise that for a lot of other things. So, I mean, I'm not going to judge that, but we, we think people need to have something at stake when they're taking an application that somebody is putting their heart and soul into and putting it in this delay process that costs time and money, so it should cost something. If the $500 is the lowest we could go, that would make sense, but, you know, that could change, that we are not attached to that.
I would also add, conversely, it's not only neighbors who file appeals.
Oh, I know.
Sometimes it's the applicant. And if we have a system where someone wants to be recalcitrant and refuse to change their plans, and we deny it, and then they have a cheap appeal fee, if that's cheaper than them getting the permit that they really should be getting, I mean, we don't want to set up a financial incentive for people to be stubborn in arguments.
Right, and to just actually, to continue on this point, when those recalcitrant applicants, they, sometimes they really want, their, their intention is to go all the way to the city council. We don't want to make it a political process. We want this to be a real review process.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landrigan, what areas are used to concern, or, you know, the areas that you want us to explore or need more further explanation? Because some of the things that's been discussed after I made a comment, you know, are some of the things that, that I needed to answer, too, so.
Well, to me, I think just the changes that, I mean, I know we went through the PowerPoint quite quickly, but really, the changes in what the DRB is going to do, what CUP did, a little more in-depth in that, because to me, some of the elements there are still very unclear. I mean, and, you know, I read, and it says, "Design review responsibility lies with the Director of Community Development on all of these," and it goes here. And the clarification of that, I think, is what I would really like to have a little more time to absorb and, and to see, you know, what, because I, I understand what's stated here. And, and I, I really love to run through these things and, and make sure that I feel comfortable in the way it's stated. And I really had to go through it quickly. It was not the easiest ordinance changes to read. It's really rich. It's really, a lot of work has been done here. I think it's, I am not opposed to any of the changes. I just want to understand and make sure that I'm very comfortable in the way it's stated. And I don't have that comfort level at this moment. But thank you for asking.
Mr. Foy?
I mean, to address that a little bit, and this is a point which we should probably emphasize, whether the commission takes another night or not. Jay touched on this a little bit, that we, our approach to design review is, is, we follow the lead of the design review board and the city council on their design decisions. And I have to emphasize that our staff is not suicidal. You know, none of, certainly none of the planners who are not in the design staff are going to be willing to put their necks out for a controversial decision. Right now, even the exemptions that have any hint of controversy get run by Jay or run by Alan Milas. And, you know, Stephanie Reich has left, but a replacement is hopefully soon coming on. You know, to have three design professionals in a city this size is unheard of. We have a, a great wealth of experience here and resources available to the staff. I know that the design review, the three design professionals will all try to work as a team and have a unified approach and, you know, a consistent method of, of judging and resolving problems. So, I mean, although, you know, we say that the director has a decision, has a decision-making authority. And I think part of what you're, you're trying to get at is what's really the thought process? And how do we make the decisions kind of behind the scenes on that? And, you know, there's a lot of deliberation. Jay has, I think, bi-weekly meetings, semi-weekly meetings with the planners to go over all the design review cases and any question that may have come up at the counter.
And is it just assumed that it's the director or his designee? Because it's never stated as such anywhere.
Yeah, well, yes.
That's in the zoning code definition. The director means the director or his or her designee, actually, in the definition. But if I may add one more thing to what Mr. Foy said, I, I need, I can't emphasize enough that, starting with when Elaine Wilkerson became the planning director and, and started what I consider a substantial shift in the way that the planning department at the time was going into modernizing the planning practice. And then that based on that particular shift, we have built a reputation, and we have built a credibility in our planning division, which is based on our relationship with the community and respecting the wish of the community as a whole, and respecting the differences in the, the community's wishes, and being able to balance that. We have worked very hard to develop this credibility. We have worked very hard to put our planning division ahead of all other planning departments in the region. And they, they copy us, they emulate us, they want to learn from our staff. We are not going to throw that credibility out by, by not respecting the trust that has been given us or any kind of level of authority that has given to us. We will respect that. I have nothing other than our word to put out here, but what I actually do, it's 10, it's 10 years of hard work that staff have done, along with the community members, very closely. We're not going to disrespect that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chau, I think we're ready to deliberate.
Okay, great. We're going into deliberation. Who would like to make any comments, if you haven't already spoken?
I think I've made my comments already.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I feel comfortable, you know, that I think our community development staff has done a wonderful job over preparing this. I think it does eliminate a lot of unnecessary steps here. And actually, our staff's ability to make the correct judgment, and the, as Mr. Foy said, the worth of experience, that I trust and, and willing to give this, the whole process, a trial. Try, you know, where, that, you know, you'll definitely streamline this, this process here, the decision-making process. So, I'm, I'm willing to, to go in that direction, recommending this streamlining change to the council.
Thanks.
For as long as I can remember, I've always heard complaints about the processes in the city of Glendale being cumbersome and being lengthy. And because of that costly. I think this is one of the first times, if not the first time, that we're trying to actually reduce the process to shorten the length of time that it takes to go from one point to the next. By definition, that requires less review. By definition, that requires less review by, by the city government and more, more trust by the residents of the city in that judgment. So, are we taking a leap of faith? Absolutely. Is it about time? Yes. So, quite honestly, I have no problem moving forward with this.
Great. Thanks. I would agree with everything he said, except for taking a leap of faith. I think there's a, there's a lot here, safeguards that have been put in place, that I, I think if, if people don't agree on something, you know, there's, there's, there's appeals and there's a process that's put in place where we can still get an outcome that meets our expectations of what we want in our city. So, I've been involved with this process since the beginning, when the task force is implemented. And I worked with many of the people who were here today. And staff did do a really good job, I think, reaching out to the community and bringing the discussion, making it a very open discussion and, and getting the feedback, but also standing their ground on why they, they believed, you know, on, on certain issues. And I think generally, there was agreement with the, with our meetings. And, and, and most of the people who were there, the very, very big majority, they agreed. And there wasn't any hard contention on any, anything. And if there was, I think they did take that into account, and they did make some changes. I agree with Ms. Landrigan that. I agree with Ms. Landrigan that if we did this again, as far as bringing it forward, first, we shouldn't have put this big item on an agenda that was already very full and I think we're lucky that some of the items were postponed or taken off and probably two meetings would have made more sense. But I also think if there's, if there's areas that if a commissioner feels uncomfortable with or wants to read more, there's still an opportunity to meet with the staff and then also express it at the City Council, if the commissioner themselves go to City Council and do it. I think that would be a much more powerful voice and for City Council to accept that because we're going to be recommending it, I think, either way and I think you would want to make sure your voice is heard at City Council level, other than just, you know, coming as amalgamation of voices together. So I think there's still that process and I don't hear something that's extremely controversial that would require us to really, you know, look more in depth into it. But I do agree that we could have done that a little bit better, but there's definitely another chance to do that, so.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I make a comment before you make the motion? I am willing to support our recommendation to the council with two considerations. One is that any precedents that are found that would lead to a consistent application of this would be very important, that there is anything that we make one determination on, it is consistently determined to be done that way and that there would be a review of appeals and this would be memorialized in that way, there would not be inconsistent application. And that's the biggest fear I have, is arbitrary and capricious, unintentional, but if there is a change in leadership, it becomes arbitrary and capricious unless there is a memorialization of this. And any precedents that come up is that they become standards and they are consistently applied in the same manner. And I can support it if that is in there, but if it's not, I have great uncomfortableness.
So what's your exact amendment? Is it an amendment?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think the way that Ms. Landrigan mentioned it, actually, we understand it completely and we full-heartedly agree with that, if that, if there are any inconsistencies in precedents, that they be addressed and memorialized appropriately or corrected otherwise. I believe that's what you're getting at. We are actually, we have that practice and we would be very comfortable with having put that in the final recommendation to council and we full-heartedly support that.
So with Commissioner Landrigan's comments incorporated?
May I, for my own edification here, codifying what you're suggesting right now, for example, I'm looking in the downtown specific plan zone and neighboring areas. What works in a zone, well, let's just take the Hillside Ordinance. What works for Hillside Ordinance in Adams Hills is quite different from what works at somewhere else. I mean, there, how is that gonna?
Well, I can address that. That's a good question and I think that addresses Ms. Landrigan's concern. Ms. Asp was sitting there is actually, participates in a lot of what we do on the zoning code. Right now, we have situations where in the gray area, we need to make some decisions that are, there's no precedent for and we are setting a precedent. What we do is that we actually write in writing, we write an interpretation and we put that on record and we put that on a list of the zoning code amendments that Ms. Asp does on a regular basis and we bring it up to the attention of the City Council and the Planning Commission first and the City Council and we codify those appropriately. So we will continue the same process in, say, the design review process, if staff is making certain decisions that are not well, that have never been practiced, it's the first time and we know that this is going to set a precedent, we actually memorialize that. And what I think Ms. Landrigan is asking is that we memorialize that and we study those on a periodic basis and if there is a way to address those in the code, do so, or if there's a way to put that in our procedures to do so, we will do that. We will, and that is exactly what we will do.
And you will add that into the recommendations?
So with that addition, upon consideration of the proposed ordinance relating generally to entitlement, streaming and mislandice revisions and minor cleanups with amendments and additions to titles two, five, 16, and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and the downtown specific plan, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments and additions to titles two, five, 16, and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and downtown specific plan.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, can we make sure that it has that comment?
Yes, I said that in the beginning.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Planning Commissioners, Asp, Landrigan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Malukian.
Aye.
Chairperson, yes, aye.
Aye, thank you.
And I would also just bring to the Planning Commission's attention that in doing so, you are acknowledging the, your consideration of the sequel categorical exemption that was determined for this project.
So noted.
If I may also repeat that, if any homeowners group or business group or any other group would like to get a comprehensive presentation of this material before we go to City Council, please contact the planning division, ask for Mr. Foy, Mr. Foy will organize some, a way to give that, bring that information, a presentation to your association or a group.
Thanks everyone for coming.
Thank you.
Next item, community development updates.
Tomorrow night, we're having an event down at the MetroLink station. It starts at 5:00 and it is an opportunity to go on a walking tour of South Glendale and then have opportunity to have dinner at some of the, I guess, various trucks that are coming by and then see a movie. They're playing Double Indemnity at the train station where it was filmed. If anybody is welcome, it's open to the public and we're inviting you. We'd love to have you attend if you're able.
This is a walking tour in hopes of getting input on a community plan for that area.
So the items that was tabled today, would that be on the next meeting's agenda or?
Well, the case that's on Pennsylvania, that will be on the next, the next agenda. And the other one, there was another one that was actually removed from the calendar, the pool hall was, that was withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay.
Comments from commissioners, anything? No? Adjourn, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Great, thanks everyone.
Thank you.